Their thoughts and their values. We pray your protection over our, our city, our county, and we ask that you go before us. I pray your blessing on today's meeting and all those that serve on the County Board of Supervisors. Would they have great wisdom as they care for our community and as they guide and lead us? We ask your blessing over all of this meeting, and I pray this in your name. Amen. Thanks.
Thank you Pastor for the great prayer. First up, several presentations today, but our first one on the agenda is Veterans of the Year Award. Ryan Cagli, Veteran Services.
Good morning Supervisors. CEO Hayes, County Council Bose. On behalf of the County Veteran Services Office, I want to thank the Board of Supervisors and the County Executive Office for their continued commitment to honoring and supporting not just my office at the County Veteran Service Office, but honoring those veterans, those men and women that have served our nation. I would like to start today by reading this proclamation proclaiming November 2025 as Veterans and Military Families Month. Whereas the residents of Stanislaus County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for the men and women who have selflessly served the country and this community in the armed forces. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of those who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life by citizens of the nation. And whereas Stanislaus County seeks to honor those individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas veterans and their families make the county stronger by exemplifying the time-honored traits of duty, loyalty, selfless service, integrity, personal courage. And whereas Veterans Day has been set aside as the day all Americans pay tribute to the men and women who have risked their lives to preserve the liberty of the nation. And whereas each November, veterans and military families in Stanislaus County are honored for their invaluable contributions. And whereas Stanislaus County recognizes, supports, and appreciates the veterans and military families year-round, especially during National Veterans and Military Families Month. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim the month of November 2025 as National Veterans and Military Families Month in Stanislaus County. Upon motion by Supervisor Kiesa, seconded by Supervisor Chance Condit, the foregoing resolution was unanimously adopted this 21st day of October 2025.
Okay, the first honoree that we're going to talk about today is Ralph Tony Lopez. Come on up buddy.
Here, I'll turn you around this way.
That way?
Everybody can stare at him.
All right, Mr. Tony Lopez is a lifelong resident of Stanislaus County, born in Modesto and raised in Patterson, where his strong values and work ethic were shaped by his mother and close-knit community around him. After graduating from high school, Tony proudly answered the call to serve his country by joining the United States Navy. During his four years of service, he worked on F-14 Tomcats, performing the vital maintenance and repairs that kept these remarkable aircraft mission-ready. By the end of his service, Tony had earned the rank of Petty Officer 3rd Class, a reflection of his skill, dedication, and leadership. Following his honorable military service, Tony continued a life of commitment and discipline through a 25-year career in corrections, working at both San Quentin State Prison and the Dual Vacational Institute, DVI in Tracy. His career in public service further demonstrated his strength of character and dedication in maintaining safety, structure, and respect in challenging environments. Tony is also a devoted family man, blessed with one daughter, one son, and four granddaughters who bring him great joy and pride. Even in retirement, Mr. Lopez continues to live by the values instilled in him as a child and strengthened through his service. Deeply dedicated to his community, he volunteers as a driver for MOVE, providing transportation for fellow veterans to medical appointments. Beyond simply driving, Tony takes the time to listen, share stories, and connect, offering camaraderie and compassion to those who have walked similar paths as Tony. His commitment extends even, his commitment extends even further. Tony is an active member of the Caesar Chavez Celebration Committee and the Stanislaus County Commission on Aging, in which I have the privilege of serving on that committee with him, where he continues to advocate for and support both the veteran and Latino communities. Through his ongoing volunteerism and community involvement, Mr. Tony Lopez exemplifies what it means to serve, not only through military duty, but through everyday acts of kindness, leadership, and connection. His life stands as a shining example of service, integrity, and heart. Today, we proudly honor Mr. Tony Lopez for his unwavering dedication to his country, his community, and the values that continue to guide and inspire him. Tony, congratulations, and thank you for your service.
Just a, just a little?
I guess. You can hold that, yeah. Well, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who's here today to bestow honor upon us, veterans who are here. And it's my privilege to be here. Totally unexpected when I was given the nod that I was going to be coming here. And I'm not at my best health right now. I just got out of hospital last week, so if you see me looking kind of groggy, looking stupid, that's, that's, that's just how I feel right now. Okay? Okay? So, thank you very much.
Congratulations.
We've got to get the picture. Make sure that we document that this happened.
Did I just hear Sebastian?
Yeah, Sebastian, sir.
Come in, come in. Hold on, make sure.
All right, next up is Terry Withrow is going to recognize Don Gray.
Don, come on up here. I'm going to get a chair for you right here, is that okay?
That's good.
Yeah.
I can stand.
Are you sure? Okay. From the looks of this resume, I know you can. Okay, so it's an honor to have Don up here, Mr. Don Gray. I'm going to, usually I don't read these things, but I'm going to read this just so we can see, and I want everybody to hear, just what you've done in your lifetime here, Don. So, Don was born in Los Angeles in 1921, so that makes Don 104 here today. Don's an extraordinary man whose life spans over a century of service, dedication, and kindness. At 104 years old, he continues to inspire all who have the privilege of knowing him. Don began his education in a small, one-room schoolhouse with just 15 students, later graduating from high school in Los Angeles. Following his father's footsteps, who proudly served in the US Navy from 1910 to 1914, those were probably different ships back then compared to what you did. Don knew from a young age that he too wanted to serve his country. As soon as he turned 18, he fulfilled that dream, joining the US Navy in August of 1939. So, just before the war. Don first served aboard the USS Arctic Refrigeration Ship commissioned in 1917 and equipped with technology dating back to 1904. So, that wasn't a state-of-the-art ship that you first started on, it sounds like. Yeah. He remained on that ship until 1943, ensuring that vital supplies reached troops across the seas. So, I just wanted to ask, Don, where were you when, on Pearl Harbor on December 7th, when Pearl Harbor hit? Where were you at?
We were at Lahaina at Maui, and we left Pearl Harbor about 6:00 December 6th, 1941.
Geez, so you left just before the, just before the attack?
Yes.
That's just amazing. Okay, sorry, I'm going to ask you some questions as we go through this, and that's just, yeah, and just, so, so when you heard about this, you were, you were on the other island there, and could you?
Sunday morning, and we thought it was a drill that was going on over at Pearl. And then we finally went to general quarters and knew it was a real thing.
Okay, that's just amazing. Okay, I'm going to continue on here with this, Don. In 1944, Don became Chief Petty Officer aboard the USS Hope, a Navy hospital ship that sailed from what is now the Port of Los Angeles. The Hope carried 750 beds for wounded service members, transporting patients from Japan to hospitals in New Guinea. Don's service took him across the equator so many times, he eventually lost count, a reflection of his tireless dedication and the countless miles he traveled in service to others. After leaving the Navy in 1948, Don continued his life of purpose and learning. He attended a trade school for refrigeration, later joining the Navy Civil Service at China Lake. That's down east of Los Angeles, right? Up in the, yeah.
In the desert, on Highway 395, if you're going up like the bishop.
Perfect, okay. But that's where you, that's where you met the love of your life, Darlene Thomas, Darlene Thompson, back then. How did you meet her?
Actually, our first date was a trip down to Death Valley Scotty's, and then that was in, no, in January. And then she came back up to go to work in May of the same year, 51. And then we decided that we liked one another, I guess, and, and I wanted to go to school, so she agreed, and we spent the next four years then at Cal Poly San Luis Obispo.
We have, we have a supervisor who graduated a little later than that. So, that's great. So, then, so you guys got married before you started school or after?
Yes, we got married in August of 51, and it was kind of a short courtship, but we stuck together for 66 years.
That's great. Yeah, and I was just going to say, you guys were married for 66 years, and Darlene passed away in 2017. Let's see, so I'm sorry. Together, you raised two sons and built a loving family that includes two granddaughters. There's one of your sons right there. That's great. And, and so you have two granddaughters and two great-grandchildren.
We have three now.
That's great. Very good, okay. Don's professional career was as impressive as his military service. He worked for an aeronautical engineering firm that designed and tested cutting-edge aerospace equipment, and later helped design refrigeration systems for supermarkets. He went on to become the General Manager of five different canneries across five cities up and down the valley here, I would assume, yeah. And, and you retired in 1966, so.
No, I retired?
Retired when you were 66, I'm sorry. Don, Don is sharper than I am, obviously. Even in retirement, Don's energy and generosity shine brightly. Never one to be idle, he rekindled his love of woodworking, a skill he once shared with his father. Don has handcrafted hundreds of trivets made from wine corks, donating all proceeds to charitable causes. He has also built birdhouses, plant holders, podiums, and even a suggestion box for his community at the park where you live. And to this day, he enjoys riding his three-wheeled bicycle, often traveling up to five miles at a time, an incredible feat that reflects his enduring spirit. And I've actually seen, Don, I, actually one time I was, Manny maybe has, I was over at Manny's Hotel one day, and I saw these guys on these three-wheel bikes with these big flags, and they look like they shouldn't be out there, is all I thought. But it's amazing, and, and as I talked to Don, my, my son-in-law, his grandfather is one of the riders with you that lives there and rides, Colonel?
John Brady.
Colonel John Brady, yeah. So, yeah, that's just amazing. Okay. Mr. Don Gray's life is a remarkable testament to service craftsmanship and love. From the decks of the Navy ships during World War II to his continued acts of generosity more than a century later, Don represents the very best of the American spirit. And today, Don, we honor you for all your service as a, as a US Navy veteran, as a devoted husband and father, a gifted craftsman, and inspirational to us all. So, Don, I would just, in closing here, and I'm going to let you talk for a little bit more here, but in closing, you've lived a life worth living, is what I could say. Just an amazing accomplishment in your life, something that we should all aspire to be. We always talk about the greatest generation, and, and you are obviously one of the greatest generation in, in what you accomplished in your life, and I'm sure your son's a testament of that too. And so, it's an honor for us today to be able to honor you and all your service and all you've done for this country. And I just want, I want to give you the mic for a little bit here and just let you tell us any thoughts that you have, any, any, any recommendations to a long life, any, any encouragement to young kids for their life. I'm going to let you talk here.
I'm always asked that question when they hear my age. What did you do? I just continued to breathe, folks.
It's that simple.
It's that simple.
Well, Don, thank you. It's an honor to have you here, and on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, we're honored to recognize you as one of our Veterans of the Year. We're going to take some pictures here really quick.
Here we go. All right, I'm going to ask James Champion to come up. That's a tough name to live up to. Champion, right? So, I'm sure that the, the Queen wrote a song about his family reunions, "We are the champions." So, real nice. This is really amazing. This is the second centurion here with us. Turned 100 years old in August. So, and you don't become a World War II vet, a veteran unless you're up there in age. When I read your paper, I know I spoke to you, and I was trying to look through, and you're trying to figure out how old folks are, and just seeing how long he was married, I'll get to that in a second, I thought, wow, that's a big number, and congratulations to the four of you also. So, Mr. Champion was born in Holdenville, Oklahoma, but he's been in Modesto since 1943. He came to Modesto at the age of 16 to work as a welder until he was old enough to enlist in the Navy. At the age of 17, James became the youngest person to pass the Maritime Commission's Certified Pipe Welder Test, which earned him an additional 20 cents an hour, on top of his hourly wage of $1.20. That's pretty amazing. And if you inflation index, that's probably $8 now, or something like that. At the age of 18, James volunteered with the Seabees, which is the United States Naval Construction Battalions, better known as the Navy Seabees. Mr. Champion served the US Navy from 1943 through 1946. Jim was a 2nd-class Petty Officer during World War II. And this is the amazing thing, it's truly amazing. Jim and his wife, Joe Champion, met at a teenage dance when he was 16 and she was 14. That was pretty typical of those days. And were in love for 78 wonderful years and married for 73 years. From his marriage, he had three sons, five grandchildren, eight grandchildren. This is one of his sons right here in the front. When Jim was finished with his service in the US Navy in 1946, he began an apprenticeship for, with Hanson's and worked his way up to a superintendent over the next 17 years. In 1974, Jim and his wife, Joe, became sole owners of Hanson's Plumbing and Electrical Contracting Firm, which was renamed appropriately Champions Industrial Contracts when he took over the company. I want you to know they're a very large company, and they worked in this building. I think you did the air conditioning and some other things, but, but you didn't recommend to put single-pane windows in. That was, that was us trying to value engineer. So, just amazing stuff. Mr. Champion is a dedicated worker and supporter of the Rotary Club for over 20 years. Supervisor Withrow said something about the greatest generation and just the, the things that people do in their life and making a difference in all of our lives. And we're kind of, you know, riding the wave of these people back in the 20s, 30s, 40s, and we've, we've got it a lot easier, but that doesn't mean we should take advantage of that. And this isn't a lecture, because you, you look at these folks and their dedication, continuing to drive veterans, you just, you just see they continue to make a difference at 104 years old, at 100 years old. It's, it's truly amazing. It's something that we should, when we go home tonight, think about that, for sure. Mr. Champion, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors in District 2, congratulations on being the Veteran of the Year, but again, thank you for all your service, and I'm going to turn the mic over, and it's all yours.
Thank you. I'm surprised to be here. And to back up a little bit, in Oklahoma, I began studying to be a pipe welder. I was, I was born and raised in an oil, oil town, and so the pipe welders were very important people. I began training as a pipe welder when I was 15 years old. And later, President Roosevelt started the EYA to train young boys between 16 and 20 years old, a train, so they could make a living when they become adults. I had one year of training. The Japanese started the war, and we started the shipyard at Richmond, California. Richmond, California Shipyard, they needed pipe welders onboard the ships they were building. They sent a recruiter to Oklahoma to get pipe welders to go to Richmond. They interviewed me. I had one year of training, and they said, we still want you to go to California, we'll give you a train ticket and a meal ticket on the train to go to California and work at the shipyards at Richmond. So, I came out and went to Richmond, and I passed the Maritime Commission Pipe Welding Test when I was 17 years old. And I worked as a certified pipe welder in the shipyards, and that meant every weld that I made, I had to stamp my number 68 on the side of the weld, so in case it failed, they would be able to take my certifications away from me. When I became 18 years old, I knew I'd be drafted, and I heard about the Seabees, and I went to the recruiting station, and I took my welding papers with me, that I was a certified pipe welder, and a lieutenant commander interviewed me, and he saw my papers, and he says, young man, if you were 20 years old, I could give you a 2nd-class Petty Officer rating to get you to join. But he said, you're only 18, and the government only allows me to give an 18-year-old 3rd-class Petty Officer. So, he gave me a 3rd-class Petty Officer rating to join the Seabees. So, they sent me to boot camp in Richmond, Virginia, and I got there, they were old men in boot camp. The Seabees' average age at that time was 34 years old. Here, I was an 18-year-old Petty Officer and the only one in the battalion. So, the good Lord nurtured me when I was in the service, and I had several blessings. And I ended up, I served 19 months in the Pacific, in Pearl Harbor and Midway Island. I was on Midway Island, and we were scheduled to invade Japan. In Japan, we had won the Battle of Okinawa, and at Midway, we were attached to the 6 Marines. There were about 3,000 Marines on Midway and 300 Seabees. They dropped a T-11 bomb the second time, the Japanese surrendered, they gave us two bottles of beer on Midway. Everybody on Midway Island got two bottles of beer. So, we celebrated and danced with each other, sang and raised hell all day long. We knew we didn't have to go to Japan. We had pretty much concerned ourselves that if, if we were sent to Japan, we would probably not come back. We were attached to the 6 Marines as support, and I was in a petroleum handling unit. We would get barrels of gasoline on the beach, so they could have gasoline for their trucks and tanks and whatever. And the, the fact that we didn't have to go was a God's blessing for all of us. They had predicted that 1 million Americans would die if we had to invade Japan. We knew we would die, so we were consoled that we would never see our parents again, our, our families, that we would die in Japan. But it was God's blessings that we came home. But it was God's blessings that we came home.
Congratulations again, James.
Hey, good morning, everyone. It's such an honor and privilege to recognize these gentlemen for their service. And on days like this where it's Election Day, you see all the different sacrifices that these gentlemen and many in this room that have served have made for us to have the liberties and the rights that we do. So, thank you so much. It's my privilege to introduce Doug Nutson. And I also usually like to not read things. Please come on up, Doug. But there's so much that Doug is doing, has done, that I feel that it's very necessary to read all of his accomplishments in service and his post-service career in volunteering for this community. So even in retirement, Doug Nutson, a proud U.S. Navy veteran, embodies the true spirit of service. By selflessly uplifting others through his actions and leadership, he not only shares his wealth of experience, but also ignites a spark of hope and resilience in those around him. He serves as a powerful example of how one person can make a significant difference, proving that the legacy of service knows no boundaries and continues to inspire the next generation. And I would like to emphasize that all five of these gentlemen, as I was sitting there, listening to them being introduced and standing there, I'll be honest with you, it gave me goosebumps. When Terry offered a chair for him, I thought he was asking for himself because you were very adamant and said, "No, I don't need a chair." 104 and still standing. So, that's what the next generation, sometimes we lose fact of how hard these gentlemen and the sacrifices that people that serve this community made so we can enjoy all the liberties we do today. So, a little history about Doug. Doug came to Modesto with his parents when he was one, attended local elementary schools and graduated from Modesto High School and Modesto Junior College. He spent four years in the U.S. Navy serving on the nuclear submarine Nautilus as a second-class sonar technician from 1966 to 1970. Doug has been married to his wife, Wavney, for 58 years. We got '73, we got '66, we got '55. I'm at 23, so I'd love to have coffee one day and see how I can continue things going. Doug has two children and four grandchildren. And his career in telecommunications, working for Pacific Telephone, AT&amp;T, Lucent Technologies, Avea Communication and Telecom Networking Service. He enjoys fly fishing, bicycling. Do you have a three-wheel bicycle too? All right. That's the cool thing to do. And antique hunting with his wife. He's been a docent at McHenry Museum for 13 years and a Historical Society Board Member for five years. I'm sure being in Modesto since you were age one, you know a lot of the history of Modesto. So, I'm sure that serves well as a docent at the museum. He's served on the McHenry Mansion Foundation for nine years and for the last four years has been on the Advisory Board of the Graffiti USA Classic Car Museum. And for the last two years, he's been an at-large member of the Stanislaus Commission on Aging. He's inspired to engage in community service driven by gratitude. He and his family feel for the blessings they have received throughout their lives, recognizing the importance of giving back. He's committed to making a positive impact in the community. His enthusiasm for volunteer was further ignited by Martha Martin, a fellow retiree who actively dedicates her time to various organizations in Stanislaus County. Inspired by her commitment to service, Mr. Nutson is eager to make a meaningful impact, which I believe you, my friend, have already made a meaningful impact to this entire community. So once again, please join me in recognizing and congratulating Mr. Doug Nutson for Veteran of the Year, District 4. Thank you for everything, sir. I appreciate it.
Thank you, man. I appreciate that. And I really feel humbled by being amongst some great American veterans and patriots here. I don't have the wonderful stories that these older gentlemen have here about the war, but I do want to thank Jose at the Aging Commission. I think he's here somewhere for the nomination. Thank you, Jose. I do want to thank the supervisors for their recognition of the veterans and also thank them for what they do for the senior citizens of our community. There's amazing amount of services that are available to all of us and hopefully everyone is using those. And lastly, thank you for your help and support at the Graffiti USA Classic Car Museum. Thank you very much.
Next up, I have the honor and privilege of recognizing Mr. Richard Gomez. Even in retirement, Mr. Richard Gomez continues to embody the true spirit of service. A proud veteran of the U.S. Marine Corps, Air Force and Army Reserve, Mr. Gomez's life reflects unwavering dedication to his country and to his community. Mr. Gomez has been a proud member of the Stanislaus County Community since 1975. His journey of service began at just 18 years old when he joined the U.S. Marine Corps and served during the Vietnam War. Over the course of a remarkable 33-year military career, spanning multiple branches of the Armed Forces, his devotion never wavered. At the age of 53, he once again answered the call to serve, returning to active duty and support of Operation Enduring Freedom. Beyond his distinguished military service, Mr. Gomez dedicated 25 years to a successful career in orthotics and prosthetics and later 12 years working with the Sylvan School District, continuing his lifelong mission to help and uplift others. Richard and his wife Nancy have been happily married for 30 years. Give a plug for that, Sebastian. That's quite an accomplishment. Together, they share two sons, one granddaughter and two grandsons, which are their greatest source of pride and joy. Inspired by his uncle, a Navy veteran of World War II, and his admiration for John Wayne, Mr. Gomez has devoted his life to serving others, both in uniform and in his community. His generosity of spirit, his leadership and his dedication to helping those around him make him not only a veteran to be honored, but a role model to be celebrated. Today, we proudly recognize Mr. Richard Gomez for his selfless service, his enduring patriotism and his unwavering commitment to making the world a better place.
I want to say that I'm very honored to be here and also tell I'm very honored to be amongst Navy personnel for it was them that helped us Marines to get from one place to another. It's hard to walk on water, but we try it. And I want to thank, thanks Navy. And also too, I'm happy to do the work here for my community and to serve my fellow veterans at Veterans Center. And I guess I want to beat my horn too much, but all I can say is when it comes down to voting, vote your heart, not the political party. Thank you very much.
Chance, just stay down there. We're going to come down and take a group photo. All right, next up on the agenda, we're going to be recognizing our great employees. And we're going to be recognizing five of them. One with 25 years of service, three with 30 years of service and one with 35 years of service. So first up, Christine.
Good morning, Chair Combs. Supervisors, Mr. Hayes and Mr. Bose. I'm here today with Lorena Gutierrez, who recognized her for 25 years of service. Lorena began her career with Stanislaus County Community Services Agency in 2000 as an Eligibility Worker 1, where she demonstrated a strong commitment to public service and a solid understanding of eligibility programs. Her dedication and performance led her to a promotion to Family Service Specialist 2 in November 2001, where she continued to build expertise in program policy and client service delivery. In June 2004, Lorena advanced to Family Service Specialist 3, taking on increased responsibility in case management, mentoring peers and ensuring program integrity. Her leadership skills, program knowledge and consistent professionalism earned her promotion to Family Services Supervisor in September 2013, where Lorena continued to oversee staff, guide daily operations and contribute to the division's ongoing success. One of Lorena's most significant achievements has been devoting 25 incredible years to empowering families throughout Stanislaus County, helping them build stability, safety and hope for a brighter future. As a supervisor, Lorena has led dedicated teams whose compassion, commitment and hard work makes a meaningful difference in our community every single day. Lorena is outgoing and always willing to dive into a problem and find solutions. Her enthusiasm, approachability and servant leadership style resonates throughout her team. Lorena is not one to leave anyone behind. She makes every effort to provide support, not only to her staff, but also to her peers, even across sections and throughout the division. Lorena has participated in a variety of community outreach efforts focused on helping others connect with the resources they need. She regularly assists with providing translation and interpretation support to help community members access services. Lorena has also volunteered to help feed individuals experiencing homelessness and has been involved in broad community outreach efforts to support vulnerable populations. Lorena comes from a large, close-knit family and truly cherishes the time she spends at family gatherings, sharing stories, laughter and traditions that strengthen their bond. This deep sense of family, connection and belonging shines through in the way she leads her team. She fosters an environment where everyone feels seen, valued and included, much like members of her own family. Lorena's warmth and inclusivity create a workplace culture built on trust, respect and genuine care, where each person feels supported and inspired to bring their best self to their workday every day. Congratulations, Lorena.
Thank you.
Lorena, thank you for your 25 years of service to the people of Stanislaus County, our families, our homelessness, all of that. Thank you for your skills and dedication. Would you like to say a few words?
25 years has gone really, really fast. I have two beautiful kids, my daughter and my son, and an amazing husband that I've been married for 28 years. I have great support in all our leadership that's here today. I've been honored to work next to my cousin that is going to be honored for 30 years. And I have some amazing friends here today too. And my sister-in-law, Miraya, and my brother-in-law, Eric. Thank you for being here today.
So I'd like to congratulate Olga, who is Lorena's cousin, who is celebrating 30 years of service. Olga began her career with Community Service Agency in June 1995 as an Eligibility Worker 1 shortly after graduating from college. She soon advanced to Eligibility Worker 2, where she continued to develop her knowledge and skills. In January 99, she was promoted to Employment Coordinator, a position later we classified to Family Service Specialist 3, where she served as a lead in the Training Unit. She then transitioned into a role as a Welfare-to-Work Worker, continuing to expand her expertise and strengthen her commitment to public service. In June 2013, Olga was promoted to Family Services Supervisor. And prior to that promotion, she spent seven rewarding years at the Turlock Community Office, an experience she found both fulfilling and enjoyable. As a Family Services Supervisor, Olga has worked in continuing services and most recently in the Customer Assistance Center, where she thrives in a fast-paced and dynamic environment. Each role has deepened her dedication to serving the community and supporting staff in delivering high-quality compassionate services. With 30 years of dedicated service to Stanislaus County, Olga exemplifies an unwavering commitment to public service and community well-being. She has received notable recognition for her valuable contributions as a Spanish bilingual administrator, assisted with testing for staff who wish to become certified bilingual workers. Over the past 13 years as a supervisor, Olga has had the privilege of mentoring staff, enhancing family services and ensuring that critical benefits reach those most in need, making a lasting and positive impact. Known for her friendly and approachable nature, Olga has always been someone who enjoys connecting with others. She lives by the golden rule, treating people with kindness and respect, just as she would like to be treated. Giving back to her community has always been close to Olga's heart. She has volunteered during disaster events and participated in community health fairs, including a two-day event at the Doubletree where medical professionals provided free service to the public. Olga supported registration, helping complete forms and interpreted for attendees with care and compassion. Alongside her husband, Olga has also volunteered for several years at Sacred Heart Church as a youth group coordinator. Together, they work closely with teens and young adults.
path for me, and it was a great path. I truly, truly am grateful that I did end up in this public assistance career and didn't expect to be here 30 years later. But I'm so grateful with all the support that we have with our managers. They're all back there, very appreciative. And if it hadn't been for you guys, I wouldn't be standing up here. So, thank you so much. I have my daughter, my husband of 36 years, awesome husband as well, and my friends back here that came to support me today, and of course, my cousin and her family. So, thank you, everyone, and thank you, Christine.
Next up is Eric McLaughlin, Information Technology Central.
All right, thank you. Good morning, Chairman Condon, Supervisors, CEO Hayes, and Council Bose. Just us up a little bit. Today, we take a moment to celebrate a remarkable milestone in the career of an extraordinary individual, Hector Ayala. Hector has dedicated 30 years of his life to serving our county with unwavering commitment, professionalism, and grace. It's an honor to recognize Hector here today. Hector started with the county on August 28th of 1995 as a Department Systems Coordinator One. And then, in 1997, Hector was promoted to Department Systems Coordinator Two. And these are positions that honestly I hadn't heard of until I started reviewing Hector's history here. In December of 2000, Hector was reclassified to Assistant Engineer Two, and then in May of 2006, he promoted to Senior Systems Engineer. And then in September of 2022, those positions were reclassified to Hector as well, to Infrastructure Engineer Three. So, for nearly 20 years, Hector has been an IT supervisor in the county, and the attributes that I'm going to mention, I'm sure they led to his multiple promotions. So, excellent job, Hector. One funny tidbit before I move on to some of his positive attributes is that he's the only county employee that I'm aware of that has ever had this unique benefit, and you may be surprised to learn that Hector once had his own office at Behavioral Health that came with its own bathroom. So, I've never met any other county employees that have that, and Hector is the first. Hector, if you know Hector, he's an early riser. He greets each day with enthusiasm and vigor. He does his best work early. He's always ready to take a challenge head-on and with a smile. In my years of working with Hector, I've never seen him get upset. His demeanor is always calm, composed, and positive. His ability to maintain such a positive approach and can-do attitude even in the most challenging situations has been an inspiration to all of us, and this is a great attribute to have, especially for an IT supervisor dealing with stressful situations, really helps out with the staff. And around a year ago, we consolidated many of the Behavioral Health IT Support Services and transferred IT staff from Behavioral Health to ITC, and so Hector is one of those staff. Hector's positive outlook and steady presence greatly contributed to the success of that transition and the harmonious work environment that we enjoy today. Hector, your dedication, hard work continue to leave an indelible mark on our county and in all the lives you have touched. Your legacy is one of helpfulness, kindness, and yielding service. Please join me in extending our deepest gratitude and heartfelt congratulations to Hector Ayala for 30 years of exceptional service. Here's to many more. Continued success and happiness. Thank you, Hector.
Hector, thank you for your 30 years of service in our technology. I'm sure in those 30 years, you've seen a dramatic change in the way things are done. And I have no idea how you kept up with all the different changes, because it seems like every five minutes, some type of technology is changing. So, thank you for your service to the people here of Stanislaus County and to your fellow employees. Thank you.
Well, first of all, I want to thank the Board of Supervisors, management, present and past management, too, who supported my career in 30 years. Sorry if I get emotional. I want to thank my wife of 34 years.
Thank you.
The work ethic that my dad, you know, gave me, I'm sorry. You know, it continues on. My children wanted to be here today, but I told them, "No, you got to go to work." No, that was kind of a joke. They really were busy today.
You probably did tell them that, because Hector rarely misses work. He really does.
That's right. It shows on my sick hours and vacation. Yeah. So, I just want to thank everybody. I just have one small story with the late Larry Poster. One time years back before he passed, I was coming out of the office and he was in his, I'm sorry, he was in his shorts, sandals, and Hawaiian shirt. And so, you know, I went out of my way to say, "Hey, Dr. Poster, how you doing?" And then he turned back and he did a double take. And he said, "Hector, what are you still doing here?" And I told him, "Remember that time that you said invest in me and I'll promise you I'll be here for at least 30 years?" Well, today is the 30 years. I'm not retiring yet, but that's what I remember of Larry. Really good man. And that day, he said, "Hey, please don't call me Dr. Poster. Call me Larry." I was like, "Okay, Larry." So, that was kind of a way, I think he showed respect for what I did. So, thank you very much. Want to thank my kids, too, who come in here, Christian, Celeste, and my two grandchildren, Mia and Alonzo. Thank you.
Next up, Heather DeValle, recognize Desiree Tobar.
Good morning, Supervisors. It's my honor today to recognize Desiree Tobar, or Desi, for her 30 years of dedicated service to Stanislaus County and the Health Services Agency. Desi was hired in March 1994 as a part-time administrative clerk two. She was assigned to registration and billing in family practice at 830 Sinek. In August of 1996, she was promoted to a full-time position, and in 2007, she was promoted to an admin clerk three position, which was the first admin clerk three we had at the family practice site. During her tenure, she was cross-trained and learned the intricacies of billing, registration, and medical records. She in turn trained other staff and new to the department on the different changes and procedural processes. During this time, she helped provide coverage in urgent care as well as assisting in the central business office. She has played very, very many roles in that area. In 2010, when the clinic expanded to family and pediatric center, Desi relocated along with other staff to the Paradise location. She's had quite the history with us in different locations. She was amongst the select few who transitioned with the residency program to the Paradise Medical Office, helping with scheduling providers on-call and home visits. In June of 2024, when PMO was transitioned, Desi was brought back to the family and pediatric center at Sinek, pardon me, at Sinek Drive, coming back full circle. Currently, Desi is one of our clerical leads who oversees medical records staff at Family and Pediatric Health Center. She's a great resource as she shares her vast knowledge and experience to her peers, providers, and the clinic staff. Desi strives her best to assist our patients with medical records and puts great customer service skills into practice in her day-to-day interactions with patients and staff. Desi performs her work amazingly well with confidence as she identifies issues and concerns with processes, which impacts patient care and takes proactive measures to make improvements. Desi possesses a remarkable attitude for devising innovative solutions to enhance operational efficiency and actively seeks opportunities to improve workflows, and we thank her for this. Desi is a valued member of the Health Services Agency family, and we are fortunate and proud to have a part of this long and productive journey with her. Please join me in congratulating and thanking you, Desi, for 30 years of service.
Desi, thank you for your 30 years of service and sharing your knowledge, skills, and abilities with people and employees here of Stanislaus County. There's really no way we can thank you more than that. Great job. Thank you.
Before I started at FPC, I was a patient war when my daughter was born. Dr. Peter Gaines was my daughter's doctor when I first arrived to the clinic. I told myself, one of this day, I want to work behind that window. So, I went to Valley Commercial College, started off as a CPA, but it was very hard. So, I changed my career to administrative, and it worked out fine. I really liked it. Graduated from Valley Commercial College in 1991. After I had my son, I got hired in 1994, on March 19th, at FPC by Ruth Perez. She was the most wonderful boss that I could ever have. She taught me a lot. I learned from the best. I thank her very much with Joan Donlin, who really cares about my career. And I did work my butt off, can I say that, off to become where I'm at. I worked very hard to get where I'm at when I got transferred to PMO. I miss working with Ruth Perez, but I still had Joan Donlin as my boss. And I thank everyone that was there for me during the incident with my husband, who I've been with for 41 years of marriage. It's like the whole agency was there for me when my husband, I, of my husband. I thank HSA for being there. I'd like to thank everyone with the agency, Ruth Perez, Joan Donlin, Herman Miguel, Patricia Treviso, Maria Echevaria, Maria Garcia, and Rosa Lomelli, my coworkers, my MAs, RNs, and all the providers whom I've worked with and left. Last but not least, would like to thank my family, my kids back there, and nine of my grandkids for keeping me busy and giving me enough energy to stay strong and happy. Thank you.
Let's get a picture first, and then we'll bring everybody.
recognize Ramona Brown, known to all of us as Mona, for her remarkable 35 years of dedicated service to Stanislaus County and the Health Services Agency. Throughout her career, Mona has been an integral part of the custodial and housekeeping operations across many HSA facilities. She began her journey with the Stanislaus County, August 27, 1990, working at the General Hospital on Sinek, where she provided exceptional housekeeping support in both surgical ward and ICU. We talked about history and how things have changed so much. After three years, Mona's skills and reliability earned her a spot on the operating floor, where she continued to deliver outstanding service until the hospital's closure in 1997. From there, she transferred, transitioned to the night shift, caring for multiple county locations, and ensuring operations ran smoothly after hours. About a decade later, Mona returned to the day shift, continuing her tradition of excellence and stepping in wherever she was needed most. Fast forward another 10 years, the world faced with the COVID pandemic. During this unprecedented time, Mona once again demonstrated her adaptability and commitment to service. She readily took on new responsibilities, supporting one of the county's COVID testing clinics, checking in community members, and helping maintain a calm, organized environment during a challenging period. Mona's unwavering dedication, flexibility, and team spirit had made her a valuable member of the HSA family now for over three decades, and her impact continues to be felt across every facility she supports. She has been and continues to be an essential member of the housekeeping team and cornerstone of the Family and Pediatric Health Center. Her presence directly contributes to the smooth, safe, and efficient operations of the facility, and her decades of experience have provided our team with both knowledge and wisdom that we can always rely on. Mona has demonstrated unwavering commitment through many transitions at HSA and has experienced over the years, changes in locations, facilities, and staffing, but she's been a steady presence through it all, ensuring that custodial and housekeeping needs of nearly HSA facility have been met with excellence. As noted by her supervisors, peers, and coworkers, Mona's service reflects the very core values of Stanislaus County, from respecting each person, her reliability and positive outlook, and her commitment to results. She delivers when it comes to ensuring a spotless and welcoming facility. When asked in the past what matters most to her, Mona's answer has always been simple and sincere: God, family, friends, and dogs. To this day, this hasn't changed, though she has made one delightful addition to her list: a cat named Richie. Mona's 35 years of dedication embody not only the mission of the Health Services Agency, but also the heart of public service. She's more than a valued employee. She is a trusted colleague, a source of stability, and an inspiration to us all. On behalf of Stanislaus County and the Health Services Agency, we thank Mona for her outstanding service, and I'm so proud to honor her today.
Mona, thank you for your 30, what do you say, for 35 years of service. Thank you for your leadership, your commitment to the people of Stanislaus County, and your service to your fellow employees. Thank you very much.
You asked me at 30 if I was going to retire, and I told you, "No, not yet." And I'm still not going to retire yet.
Everybody heard that.
I want to thank all my bosses, Heather, Deb, Adam, all my friends that are here. My family couldn't be here, but I appreciate it. And like I said, I just, I take pride in what I do, leaving a clean and safe environment for all of our customers and coworkers. Thank you.
I think all the service award recipients are going to take a group photo out in the foyer.
where she continued to deliver outstanding service until the hospital's closure in nineteen ninety-seven. From there, she transferred, transitioned to the night shift, caring for multiple county locations, and ensuring operations ran smoothly after hours. About a decade later, Mona returned to the day shift, continuing her tradition of excellence and stepping in wherever she was needed most. Fast forward another ten years, the world faced with the COVID pandemic. During this unprecedented time, Mona once again demonstrated her adaptability and commitment to service. She readily took on new responsibilities, supporting one of the county's COVID testing clinics, checking in community members, and helping maintain a calm, organized environment during a challenging period. Mona's unwavering dedication, flexibility, and team spirit had made her a valuable member of the HSA family now for over three decades, and her impact continues to be felt across every facility she supports. She has been and continues to be an essential member of the housekeeping team and cornerstone of the Family and Pediatric Health Center. Her presence directly contributes to smooth, safe, and efficient operations of the facility, and her decades of experience have provided our team with both knowledge and wisdom that we can always rely on. Mona has demonstrated unwavering commitment through many transitions at HSA and has experienced over the years, changes in locations, facilities, and staffing, but she's been a steady presence through it all, ensuring that custodial and housekeeping needs of nearly HSA facility have been met with excellence. As noted by her supervisors, peers, and coworkers, Mona's service reflects the very core values of Stanislaus County, from respecting each person, her reliability and positive outlook, and her commitment to results. She delivers when it comes to ensuring a spotless and welcoming facility. When asked in the past what matters most to her, Mona's answer has always been simple and sincere: God, family, friends, and dogs. To this day, this hasn't changed, though she has made one delightful addition to her list: a cat named Richie. Mona's thirty-five years of dedication embody not only the mission of the Health Services Agency, but also the heart of public service. She's more than a valued employee, she is a trusted colleague, a source of stability, and an inspiration to us all. On behalf of Stanislaus County and the Health Services Agency, we thank Mona for her outstanding service, and I'm so proud to honor her today.[516.12][516.12](applause)
Mona, thank you for your thirty, what do you say, for thirty-five years of service. Thank you for your leadership, your commitment to the people of Stanislaus County, and your service to your fellow employees. Thank you very much.
You asked me at thirty if I was going to retire, and I told you, no, not yet.[539.16][539.16](laughter) And I'm still not going to retire yet.[541.54][541.54](laughter)
Everybody heard that.[544.04][544.04](laughter)
I want to thank all my bosses, Heather, Deb, Adam, all my friends that are here. My family couldn't be here, but I appreciate it. And like I said, I just, I take pride in what I do, leaving a clean and safe environment for all of our customers and coworkers.
I think all the service award recipients are going to take a group photo out in the foyer. Sheriff Dirksey and Susie Powell-Ruse.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here this morning. This is going to be, hopefully, a relatively quick update on our wellness program. And as I get ready here to introduce Susie, this really came about seven years ago, and to be honest, when I ran for sheriff the first time, I was overwhelmed by the number of people in our community who were very concerned about what we did to take care of our staff at the sheriff's office, both in the physical category, but also in the emotional and mental side of this profession. And from that outpouring of concern, and then some kind of internal work, we started our wellness program, and it kind of started with baby steps, and it was a bit kind of herky-jerky for a while with various things that we did, but it grew. We ultimately won an award, two or three, four years ago, a while back, for having the best program in the country for officer wellness, which we are very proud of. That being said, as the program grew, it became a bit more disjointed as well, and we needed someone to coordinate this program. And thankfully, through a grant, we were able to select someone, and that someone is Susie Powell-Ruse. And I'm not going to go into the entirety of her background, but given the nature of the folks that work at the sheriff's office and kind of the various backgrounds that we have, from, you know, kind of a SWAT guy on one end of the extreme to, you know, maybe a civilian employee on the other end, we needed the right person that could accomplish this for the entirety of the organization, and that person is Susie. SWAT guys really cannot argue with a three-time Olympian. And so she has been just fantastic for the program, and she's very active, actually statewide, with the Sheriff's Association and assisting with other programs elsewhere. And we are pleased to have her. So, Susie, please, take it away.
Thanks, Sheriff. Good morning, gentlemen. Thank you for allowing me some time today to speak on behalf of the Sheriff's Office Wellness Program, Susie Powell-Ruse. Just real quick, my background, as Jeff mentioned, this is Sheriff mentioned, is this working? It's in track and field. I was a three-time Olympian in the discus throw and represented our country as such. And so my job in this role is to take what I've learned, life experience as an athlete, high performer mentally and physically, gather those resources, and bring them to the men and women of our sheriff's office. And so it's a great honor to be in this role, and there's a great need, which I'll get into right now. You know, you hear the term wellness, right? What does that actually mean? You know, there's corporate wellness programs offered throughout various organizations, but for our organization, as the sheriff just mentioned, it's taken very seriously, and in some instances, it can mean, you know, life or death for our deputies. So it's really become, we have a culture of wellness, I would say, and it's a thing that's not only internally accepted and sort of fostered, but it's something that people are recognizing even outside of our agency, other agencies noticing that we really take our mental wellness seriously and our physical wellness seriously. Any advice on how to move the slide? It's, this is, we can do the whole presentation with this slide, it's totally fine. It's really more just for aesthetics than anything. So to the sheriff's point about...
One sec. Jeff's working it.
Oh, this could be trouble. And by the way, you know, as a wellness coordinator, listening to these amazing veterans speak, was it Dawn, one hundred and four, his advice was keep breathing, so I'm taking notes, I'm like, well, it's that simple.[890.73][890.73](laughter) I might be out of a job, you know? And then also, looking at our sheriff's office offerings, we may have to get some three-wheel bikes, you know? It sounds like that's the key as well, so. And they're all married, you know, that's, it's just mind-blowing, so thank you for having them today. It was a real treat to hear their stories. And so to the sheriff's point earlier about, you know, kind of the SWAT guys that are our tough guys in many ways, and our CERT team on the adult detention side, I always flash this picture of me in Olympic Stadium competing, because it does sort of give me some street cred with the rough-and-tumble guys in our, in our agency. Oh, that worked. Okay, so getting back to the idea of wellness, right? So when you are trying to serve an organization of a thousand people with, you know, a recruit of twenty-five, twenty-five-year-old young whippersnapper coming out of the academy, and someone like myself in their forties in that more of an admin role, how do you cover all those bases? And the answer is, you don't. You do your best to offer as many things as you can to appeal to the different needs, right? Because the twenty-five-year-old young guy has different health and wellness needs than someone, you know, my age in their forties that doesn't need to be, you know, busting down doors and being necessarily in top physical shape, although top physical shape for my age. So there's different levels of appropriateness and fitness and wellness, depending on where you're at on the spectrum of life and age and gender and all that. So what's interesting about this population, however, is their health outcomes are not great. So maybe they need, maybe the veterans will fare better, I'm not sure, but the general population life expectancy is about seventy-six years old. For our law enforcement professionals, it ranges from fifty-seven to sixty-six. Now again, these aren't absolutes, right? But this gives you an idea that the life expectancy for our law enforcement professionals is much less. In addition, the sworn staff is more likely to die by suicide than in line of duty death. Forty percent of LEOs are considered obese, and cardiovascular disease is a huge problem as well, higher than the average. And so, and the sources are cited there in that microscopic print. And the question is, well, why, right? Why are law enforcement professionals subject to this sort of poor health outcomes? And, you know, yes, it's a stressful job, but you could argue that being a supervisor is a stressful job, right? Or there's lots of stressful jobs in this audience. One of the differentiating factors, and I'll get into this in a few slides, perhaps if I have time, is the fact that our first responders and supervisor conduct, you could probably attest to this, you know, they are seeing and dealing with some of, you know, the most horrific and gruesome and, you know, evil portions of our population, right? And not speaking hyperbolically, really, truly, our law enforcement professionals are dealing with things that frankly, I'm very fortunate and blessed not to have to deal with. And there's a physiological side of this as well. So what I have found so fascinating in working with this population in the last two years is when people are repeatedly exposed to sort of horrific things, it actually changes the firing pattern of the brain. So the shape of the brain starts to change, behaviors start to change, and there's physical and mental manifestations of this. So the human brain was designed maybe to encounter, and the average civilian encounters maybe three to four traumatic experiences in their lives, meaning something really horrific. The average law enforcement first responder sees something like three hundred to four hundred. Well, our brains simply were not designed to process that kind of experience repeatedly. So this is having a negative effect on their health. So that would be maybe sort of the mental side of the equation, but it's all one. So why do we need a deputy wellness program? Well, in some cases, their lives depend on it. And so at the sheriff's office, what we're trying to do is cover as many things as possible, because we are so large, and there are so many different needs, we're, our offering is diverse. So when I first took the job and sort of discussing goals with the sheriff, he said, I want as many people using these programs as possible, which is a tall order when you have, you know, roughly a thousand people. And so my job is to engage people either through weekly communication, through wellness challenges, which sound maybe kind of silly on the surface level, but if we don't get a chance to get to the last slide, if you could, gentlemen, if you could take a minute to read the final slide, it actually talks about some of the sort of life-changing moments that people had throughout the wellness challenges, blood marker levels, you know, improving, weight loss, outlook on life improving, et cetera. So now, with different surveys and feedback we've received, we're at a roughly over sixty percent engagement with our population, which is pretty outstanding when you consider, you know, all the different sort of things that people could be doing for wellness, they are engaging in what we're offering. We send out surveys to make sure that we're on point with the population that we're trying to serve, right, the men and women at the sheriff's office. And interestingly enough, one of the things that came back recently was a meal prep service for healthy meals onsite. So as you guys know, the jail is a fixed post, and so people can't leave, and if they are trying to eat healthy and don't pack a lunch or whatever, where are they going to go? So we have healthy meals now in-house at the jail, onsite at the SO, and then at the training center as well. And that's something that came from, feedback from our people. So we're trying to listen and engage and get as many people as possible. On a taxpayer side, it looks as though, and our numbers are still preliminary, and I would love to come back and share this with you in the future, through this grant, the investment that we're making, how much time is left?
Go ahead.
Okay. We're seeing a cost savings in days away on injury and first aid and some other markers that are showing a cost savings to the county as well. So those are promising numbers, and like I said, I'd love to come back and report on those in maybe a year or whenever you can find time in the calendar. So on the, on the physical side of the house here, your orthopedic has really been a tremendous resource for us, and what that is, is we have onsite soft tissue therapy for both the rehab of an injury and also sort of the prehab, keeping our men and women from getting injured and having plans specifically tailored to them. We have gyms onsite that have been refurbished, and we really do have a kind of an athletic culture building out there at the training center. So if you're ever around and want to stop by, please let me know, I'd love to give you a tour. Through the wellness grant, we were also able to help subsidize and encourage drop-in rates for local CrossFit, local Pilates, and yoga studios, and also offer, although not through the grant, deputy fitness incentives. So if deputy, once a year, wants to show that they can pass the sort of the basic post-physical test, they get a bonus. If they want to really push themselves, they can either do the SWAT test, which is a little harder, or on the adult detention side, they can do the CERT test, which is like the SWAT for jail staff. So we are trying to incentivize people to be physically active, because what we do know is that, you know, the physical body is the gateway to the mental, emotional landscape. And we know that even a twenty-minute brisk run or walk actually starts to reshape the brain from a traumatic experience, right? So there's all these pathways to help people perform at their best mentally and physically, and that really is sort of the sole reason for our wellness program. So we have mental support offerings through our peer support program, and if you're not familiar with that is, it's other peers in our organization that have a heart for helping others and counseling, or have been through traumatic incidents themselves, and are there to lend a helping hand, because as sympathetic as I am as a civilian, I've never been in an OIS or another critical incident, and it's much more powerful when it comes from a peer who can relate, right? We can all appreciate that. And so we also have our clinician on staff, and coming up, we're going to be doing a study with Arizona State University, doing some brain mapping on how we can clear some of these brain injuries from the traumatic exposure out, and I'd be happy to report on that once that study is done as well. So as you can see, we have a variety of things, but we're continuing to work and either eliminate things that aren't working or people aren't using, and find things that people really do want to engage. And I was able to mention this earlier, but if I could just share one thing with the board today as it relates to mental wellness, mental performance, the repeated exposure that our men and women face is really like an injury to the brain, which I personally, as a former athlete, find very empowering, because if I have an injury, I know I can heal it, right? There's a means to fixing it. And the good news for these types of traumatic exposure injuries, and it's very similar to, for those of you that follow football, you know, the concussion injuries, or even a flashbang injury, or concussive injury, a TBI, traumatic brain injury, it's very similar in how it operates, and the good news is, there's really sort of wonderful, easy, cost-effective ways to access and help heal these injuries via exercise, breath work, even sauna, and other techniques that we are working to bring to the sheriff's office. So that's the good news. And then this last slide here is sort of really personifying the results, right? Like, this isn't just, you know, we're checking the wellness box because that's the, what other agencies are doing. This is something we take seriously, and our, our staff takes seriously, and these are some results, people that came from, in a way, a simple walking challenge. We did a year-long walking challenge where we had a goal every month to hit, and then we awarded the top three finishers, and it was really fun, actually. And people really actually moved health markers, took it seriously, lost weight, and it was a catalyst for positive change in their lives. And so that's really our wellness program in a nutshell. I'm sure there's some other things maybe the sheriff wants to add, but it's been an honor to serve in this capacity, and I thank you for your time today and your ear, and I would be glad to come back periodically and report on our findings and our numbers, and I'd be glad to field any questions as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Susie. Any questions from the board? Go ahead, Terry.
Just, Susie, really, I think I heard you say you had about, as far as participation, did you say about sixty percent?
Yes, sir. Yes.
And is that both in the, in the physical? I'm just wondering as far as the mental health.
Sure, sure, sure. It would be all programs. So that could be anything from using one of the gyms, to peer support, to being in the walking challenge, or in one of our other challenges.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions? Mary? All right. Thank you, Susie.
You know, Terry, the question's very valid, because one of the biggest challenges that we find is it's fairly easy to address the physical, right? A lot of folks will look and say, I want to get faster, stronger, lose weight, gain muscle, whatever it is that they want. The physical, we find to be the simpler aspect of it. Getting through the mental side is much tougher, and removing the stigma around any kind of a mental challenge is, that takes a change in culture. And I would say that it's not even just an organizational change in culture for the sheriff's office, it is a change in culture in the entire profession, because that stigma is there, and, you know, it's been there for probably a couple hundred years at this point. So we're trying to overcome that.
Yeah, no, that's why I asked the question. I have, I have a daughter who's a TV reporter, and she did a story called "The Broken Blue", and she actually got nominated for an Emmy for it.
Oh, fantastic.
And it was just amazing how much I learned from that and how much she learned. Like you said, the stigma is the hardest part to get past that, to get a cop to think, yeah, I need some help, and to ask for help is the first, is the hardest part, but as you detailed here, it's crucial to get in there and get that help, and it's fixable.
It is, and it's not, it's not easily seen, right? When you break an arm, you can see the casp, but when you've got a TBI or an injury to the brain, you just can't see it.
Yeah, so it's great. I'm just, it's great you guys are doing that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
The entire efficacy.
All right, moving on to public comment. Public comment is a time for those in attendance to speak on items not already on today's agenda, please state your name for the record, direct all comments towards the dice, and so does fair for every speaker. Please keep the comments to five-minute time limit. First up is Ron McMurtry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Ron McMurtry here. This is really more of a follow-up and a heads-up regarding the discussion and testimonial about dangerous intersections. We were talking about Grayson and Shiloh, and that I believe that Stan RTA wanted to have a bus stop there, so that young people and volunteers who don't have other transportation can get there, and can get there safely, and also get home. And so coincidentally, I brought that up at the last Stan RTA meeting, Supervisor Kiasa can confirm that. And there's an intersection that we, I thought was impossible to build a bus stop there, and that's at West Hatch and Boulder, and that's going to really serve the Shackelford and Park Lawn communities, but that's another intersection that would have been on my list of intersections that should be looked at. I don't know what the stats are, but it's a really, what do they call, uncontrolled intersection, but it's kind of, it's a small kind of community feel to it. It's weird, but it's an important intersection. So I'm thinking, I'm hoping that, you know, the Stan RTA... So I'm thinking, I'm hoping that, you know, the Stan RTA and the County Works Department can work together on those two particular projects, since now there's going to be more people using the crosswalk on Hatch and Boulder. So I know this is probably on Director Lehman's radar, but I just want to officially state that. And I'm putting together a list of intersections that I'm concerned with that affect Stan RTA operations and the riders. So that'll be coming into your inbox at some point. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Next up is Marcy Cole. Good morning.
I didn't realize I could speak unless we were on the agenda. So I have come to a few of the meetings, and today I'm going to try to get through this. I have a video that I'd like to show of the corner of Carpenter and West Main where I live, of the traffic that I have to deal with. I don't know if you can see it daily. This was a week ago. This also happened Friday on Halloween. I turned around at the Modesto CHP facility, and it took me six minutes to get back to that corner where I started my video. The traffic is horrific. I have many things I want to say, but limited time and my 12 pages, I won't be able to do that. So I am going to focus on the traffic today, and I'll be back on the 18th to discuss other matters. I would like to bring to the attention of the Board of Supervisors the traffic on West Main and Carpenter. The Machado family or Construction would like to put a compost facility about a half a mile from my home, and I am opposing this. This is not the area for a project like this. I feel their compost facility needs to be in a rural area where there is light to no traffic, and this is not the case of the road I live on. The traffic on West Main, I feel, has gone above and beyond its capacity. Presently, the traffic heading east on Las Palmas and Patterson, which turns into West Main after you cross, the San Joaquin River flows satisfactory. I feel this is due in part for the traffic signals installed on Las Palmas. Once you cross the river and get to the corner of West Main and Carpenter Road, the traffic becomes congested due to the stop sign at the intersection, causing traffic to experience a stop-and-go pattern. At this particular intersection, cars are continually backed up for five days a week, especially during peak commuter hours. There are local community, I'm sorry, there are local commuters that live in our county that travel to the Bay Area daily for work. These commuters have added additional congestion onto our local roadways, especially West Main. This particular stretch of West Main is situated between Highway 99 and Interstate 5. This thoroughfare is used to connect drivers to either the Bay Area or Southern California. The intersection of Carpenter and West Main has proven deadly for many drivers through the years. Multiple cars have been rear-ended at this intersection. I know because my father owned the Corner Fee Lot for many years before his passing. I have seen drivers hit so hard from behind that their cars burst into flames. This is due in part because drivers, I'm sorry, I get emotional because I've seen too much of this. This is due in part because drivers fail to stop. There are countless memorial markers from victims who have died that line the side of the road of West Main. When drivers leave this intersection heading east on West Main, they hit the pedal and speed until they get midway on Main Street. The midway is the exact spot where Machado's Construction want to install a compost facility. Presently, the traffic flows, although you could say they are driving usually over the speed limit, until they get to the signal, the signal light at West Main and Crow's Lining Road. If this compost facility is allowed to be installed on West Main, it will halt the flow of traffic in front of this proposed facility. Drivers will be having to stop to allow waste trucks to enter this facility. Drivers will have to slow or stop if a waste truck is exiting this facility. This traffic change can prove fatal. I have more to say, but do I finish it, or do I bring it back on the?
You can just finish up your thought and then end it.
Okay, yes, hold on. The traffic route for these waste trucks has been unclear from what the Machados have been saying. If their trucks are allowed to head west to this facility, they will have to cross the opposing lane to gain access to this facility. This is not a very good plan. And this road is very foggy during the winter. I myself, when I leave my driveway, have to hop onto West Main to go to work. I have to roll down my window to listen for traffic and look for headlights. How can a truck, a noisy truck, hear traffic in the fog? They'll be having to turn in front of these vehicles in the fog and leave in the fog. Very dangerous. And I just want to say, I've lived there all my life. This is not a facility that should be placed in our community, our very active community full of children, our school, our neighbors.
Thank you.
It's unsafe. Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Next up is Milt Treewyler.
Chair, staff, and community members, Milt Treewyler, I'm a lifetime Stanislas County resident. I have some important information. The prime farmland in the MID and TID irrigation districts is a natural resource that cannot be replaced or mitigated because of its unique nature, its quality soils, its water availability, and its good climate. There's no other farmland like this in our country or on the earth. There's a major shortage of sustainable prime farmland and water in the world today. We now know that here in the San Joaquin County, we will need to remove almost 1 million acres of farmland south of Stanislas County from production, because there's not enough water to irrigate it. Board, staff, and public members, we have many things to be concerned about today. We have to be very careful of who we listen to and what we believe. There are people in Stanislas County that are plotting to destroy the future for our children and our descendants. As the county board, you must be strong and do the right thing and save the sustainable farmland around our cities and towns for our children and descendants. There is an abundance of poor soils and wasteland in California and our nation for the developers to build houses on, like the Altamont Pass area, or the area east of Oakdale. There's also the large landmass area west of Patterson along Interstate 5, and east of Fairfield along Highway 12, all the way to Rio Vista. We also have the entire states of Arizona, Nevada, Utah, New Mexico, and Colorado for the developers to build houses on. In our Stanislas County cities, we must build up and not out on our city infills and blighted areas. Stanislas County Board, you must never allow the sustainable farmland north and west of Modesto, the farmland southwest and northeast of Salida, the farmland west of Riverbank, the farmland north of Turlock, and the farmland all around Series and Houston that's in the MID and TID irrigation districts to be developed. Not in 10 years, not in 20 years, not in 50 years, not ever. Yes, I said not ever. There's no other sustainable farmland like this in the world. The farmland in Stanislas County is fully economically developed, producing food for our state and our nation. We are adults and parents, and we have an obligation to do what's right and best for our children and descendants. We must all be good stewards. How could educated and caring people be so cold-hearted and irresponsible to want to destroy the best farmland on earth? You don't get a second chance. Once you turn sustainable prime farmland into housing, you create a food desert. County Board members, staff, you must be committed to saving this irreplaceable farmland for our children and descendants. The farmland in the MID and TID irrigation districts is sacred. We must be putting all of our efforts and brain power into saving the best farmland on earth that we have here in Stanislas County. There's nowhere else that you're going to find it. We must do like our ancestors did for us 138 years ago, when a Modesto attorney, C.C. Wright, became the father of the irrigation district legislation in 1887. He went up to Sacramento, and they passed the formation of irrigation districts in the state of California. MID and TID were the first two irrigation districts in California. We've been doing that for the last 128 years, and it is your responsibility to see that this irreplaceable farmland, you can't find any other place on this earth, is protected. That is the responsibility of us, so we can plan for our children and our descendants, who haven't even been born yet, just like our ancestors planned for us. It is so important that you do this, and it needs to be really addressed to this problem. We can build up and out. Modesto's done a pretty good job of building up, but they need to build up much more. High-rise buildings everywhere. That's how we can do this. I just implore you to think of your children and descendants and work on this very hard. Thank you.
Thank you, Milt. Next up is Julianne Phillips. Julianne Phillips.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Julianne Phillips. I'm here on behalf of Senator Alvarado Gil. What an honor to be here today, as you guys recognized, our outstanding Veterans of the Year. I just want to highlight that next Tuesday, the Senator is a sponsor of the Veterans Day Parade here in Modesto. My colleague and I will be providing mobile office hours along the parade route. We'll have tents set up, and we'll also be hosting a meet and greet for veterans before the event as well. I'm looking forward to January, when I can provide you guys with a more comprehensive legislative update, but for today, I'm just going to highlight some of our events in the district. Over the past week, the Senator has been in the district. We've done tours of the International Paper Plant. We toured the MID Regional Water Treatment Plant. We hosted a meet and greet on the west side at the Baptist Church right by the King Kennedy Center, and we also have been hosting one-on-one meetings with constituents. I've been busy hosting mobile office hours in Salida. Last week, I also attended their MAC meeting. And then coming up this month, on November 20th, I'll be hosting mobile office hours in Newman at their administration building. I just want to let you know, thank you for the time to provide a report, and our office is already always here for any questions and concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Julianne. All right, next up is Michael Musada.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Chairman, and members of the board for allowing me to speak today. My name is Michael Musada. I'm running for Congress in the California 5th Congressional District. So today, I'm just here to introduce myself, and I would like to follow up at some point with each of you and have a more one-on-one conversation. I grew up in Amador County. I moved there when I was 10, graduated from there, and then went off to school to study engineering at Cal Poly. And my career took me over to the Washington DC area, where I was doing engineering for a little while, and then got into federal government service. And most recently, decided to quit my job there and come back to my home district to run for Congress. You know, I was really inspired to see the folks that you all recognize today. We not just had our veterans, which is fantastic to see them being honored today, but also public service employees, public sector employees here in the county. And, you know, I believe that our country, the strength of our country comes from local government. It comes from people who care about their communities, working together to address local challenges. And that is very much where my focus is. If I'm elected, I am very much going to be focused on how I can serve the local community. I'm a new resident of Stanislas County, moved to Riverbank back in July, and my family has loved it here. We have been thrilled with the parks that are here, the services, and how proud folks are of the community and how much they care about it. So I'm going to be out and about this district. We are just one day short of a year from the next election, and I will be out around Stanislas County. And next week, actually, I will be in the Veterans Parade, Veterans Day Parade, and we will be having a booth there. So for any of you who would like to come and meet me and speak with me, I'd be happy to see you there, and members of the community as well. You know, I would love to see everybody at that parade, to honor our veterans, and to just bring the community together. So thank you so much for the time today, and I will, you know, hopefully be speaking with each of you very soon.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, that was my last comment card that I have. If you'd like to make public comment on items not on the agenda, now is your time. Come on up. Go ahead. Come on up, Sebastian. And you'll be next.
Good morning. I really enjoyed myself today to honor our veterans. 104 years old, I know I'm not going to make it there, I don't think, but that was a blessing. And then honoring the peoples that work in the county that dedicated their heart, and I want to praise them. I always say it's good to be in the land of the living. And, you know, I was just sitting there thinking that where I reside at, Monterey Park Track, I've been talking maybe 25 years. They are in need of lighting. But the last time I talked about it was 10 years ago, but they said that they count the property people lights, and I don't think that's fair. I think we should have lights at the road, not because they have lights on their property. We can't count that. And I'd like to see the new style lights like they got on the freeway or in the community. They come on automatic, you know, you know what I'm trying to say. It's a good place. I drive a fairly new BMW, and I know what you're going to say, they did the roads earlier this year, but they only sprayed it with tar and a couple of rocks. The road is still bumpy. My BMW, he says, and I know they did the road earlier, but I think that it needs a little thickness on the tar, I guess. I'm not in that engineered department. But if you ride out there, you're going to see that the roads need to be taken care of better than what we got. Like I said, I spoke on this years, 10 years, probably 15 years ago, when Clu So was in. We need some lighting out there. We need some light. Let's not count the property people lighting. Let's count the lighting on the street. But like I said, just come and check it out and see what we can do. We're working together, you know? Me as a community activist here in this county and run for and run for many, many office. I haven't made one yet, but I still put myself out there. But I just wanted to comment on that. It's a good day. I really enjoyed myself. I'm going to say this, and I'm going to say that. In the mornings, this time, y'all scheduled nine o'clock. Can we, can y'all have meetings around 10? I've been talking about it. Y'all know I've been speaking about it probably over 15 years. It's too early for me. I'm not young. I may look like I'm 19. That's a good thing. But the body is not like it used to be. But if we can get, because you know, a lot of elder people, they would like to come out, and I really believe it's too early for them. If we can probably have the meetings around 10 or 11, you know, set up early in the morning. But I want to thank you guys, and it's God good to see everybody. God is good.
All the time.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Sebastian.
Oh, wait a minute. I'm sorry. I don't know what time I add on it, but as you know, just about everybody here know that Mr. Jones been working on the Martin Luther King. I have a committee, the Martin Luther King Committee, and I want to venture, I want to bring the county in. There's two statues that Mr. Jones is working on. The first one is Dr. Martin Luther King. As you know, it took me almost 16, not going to say 16, maybe 14 years to get the park, our first park. And we made history. Dr. Martin Luther King, 602 Martin Luther King. I want to put two statues. One statue of Dr. King and one statue of Caesar Chavez. As you know, Caesar Chavez had a statue, but some crazy person, I don't know, ran his truck, and he didn't care about him, but this, I don't know if they stole the head, but I got pictures of the disrespect. But I want the county to join me on this venture. It's going to cost money. And I already put the city on notice. I don't know how they work over there, but I'm just coming. We all got to work together. We got this new stadiums coming in, or whatever you call them, the soccer stuff and all that. Well, if we had a statues, because we've probably had a statue in this town probably 30, 40 years, probably. It would be nice to have people to come and see Dr. King's statue, like the one they have in Washington, and one of Caesar Chavez and his former clothing, that he wore jeans and shirt. So, but I thank you, but I really want you guys to work with me. Let's get this statue in. They're doing the Martin Luther King Park. Thanks to me, I secured 8.5 million dollars, because we lost the first bid, and it wasn't going to come until 2027 to redo the park. But the same year, June 18th, 2022, we installed our first Martin Luther King Park, and we made history. We was the last city, big city, to have a park named after Dr. King. And I'm going to stand with Dr. King, and I got to get that building named, so Dr. King can stand alone.
Thank you, Sebastian.
His name. Thank you.
Thank you, buddy. All right, come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and fellow supervisors. My name is Dino Wilson, and I've talked to most of you people already about this so-called compost toxic site going not half a mile down the road, but right next door. And unfortunately, I'm going to be quick with this. I'm not really here to talk about the compost center issue. I'm basically here to talk. One thing my dad used to teach him with his son, he says, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it." Well, something needs to be fixed, and the issue that I'm having right now that's going to be passed on to fellow people and citizens of our county is the planning commission kind of dropped the ball on this compost center. And what I mean by that is that this is an issue with air quality, ground control, water tables, fires, traffic, you name it. I'm living right next door to it. And the problem is that when this thing came about, the Machado family had four years talking with the planning commission to make this thing happen. We were notified one day before Christmas that there was going to be a hearing coming up talking about this compost center. Well, they had four years to work on it. We've got three and a half months to educate ourselves and come up with a plan of attack on this issue. And the problem that I have is there was only four neighbors that received a notification of this compost facility. And most of the people I'm neighboring don't even know what a compost facility is. So the Ben Court family and myself took it upon ourselves to take copies of these notifications and go up and down and around the streets and roads and so forth to notify people of what was going on and educate them about what the dangers and the hazards of this center are. Now, the problem I have with is, and I did talk about this with the planning commission, they say, "Look," I said, "what's the ruling? What's the standards? What's the regulations for notification?" Well, the people that live on the parcels next to this site will be notified and within a quarter-mile radius. A quarter-mile radius in town might include 50, 75, maybe 100 residents, depending if you've got an apartment or that type of housing and so forth. But out there, a quarter of a mile might take up five or six houses and stuff. So my question is, is there any way that we could change the procedures the planning commission has? And please notify everybody within a mile radius or two-mile radius, because we're finding that the compost center on Jennings Road, which is four and a half miles from our house, those people were ambushed like we were. They were not notified, because the city of Modesto was pretty smart. They bought the parcels that were adjacent to the compost center that they put in. So they're not going to complain about their compost center. And I know people that know people, and unfortunately, there's been a lot of complaints from the west side over there about the smell, the stink, and all the other issues that go with the compost center. But it's too late. When the bullet leaves the gun at the barrel, you can't bring it back. Now, you're going to be responsible for, you're going to take actions of what happens when that bullet hits something. It's just like the words that come out of your mouth. You can't take them back. So my issue is that, hey, we need to change procedures. The planning needs to notify and broaden the area out to, and not just the people that own the parcels. My renters next door didn't get the letter. Why not? Because our name is on the deed. They didn't get the notification, because they're a renter. Well, it doesn't matter. If you're living in that area, everybody needs to be notified of what's going on and what's going to affect you. Health conditions, air quality, groundwater, the whole nine yards. So I would like to ask the favor that we need to change the procedures, lengthen out these notifications to like a mile radius. And I would like to also see something in writing back from you telling me that, yes, that you have taken care of. It doesn't have to be a long letter, just a couple of words, a couple of seconds, just telling me that this has been taken care of, because the people out there next to the compost center, those people are just constantly complaining, complaining, complaining. And I did try to contact the county and say, "Hey, I would like to know how many people are complaining about this issue." I guess I'm not high up on the pay scale, and I don't get that information. Why, I don't know. But I would suggest that each and every supervisor here talk amongst each other, find out what those are. Don't tell me, just keep it to yourselves, and find out how many complaints are being issued from the smell and stuff. Now, I'm quite familiar with compost center, because I was probably one of the first ones initiated, the one on Finch Road with Richard Jilton's transfer station. Transfer stations, compost center, and the livestock facility down there. And that was shut down back in, I believe, 2005. So it lasted about 10 years. But the issue was the smell. And I think chances are, you're well aware, you lived in series, and you know what that smells like. So you can pass that on to your fellow supervisors and so forth. But, and in fact, I think that if I'm not mistaken, I think it was Senator Dianne Feinstein that actually took control of that. They took the bull by the horn and got them shut down. And what you may or may not know, that there's, I do know an employee that used to work there, and lo and behold, they have barrels of fragrance on that property where that compost center was, just to try to keep cleaning up the air. So there again, that's what I said. Just please take my advice and try to come up with some new plan of attack and notifications, and let everybody know what their livelihood's about, because it's about our health and our well-being. Thank you very much.
Any other public comments about items not on the agenda? And seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment, and we are going to take a quick five-minute break before we continue on.
to provide public comment on any matter not on consent? I know we're going to be discussing B-10.
Thank you.
Any supervisor like to pull any other consent calendar? So I'll take a motion for everything on consent except for B-10.
Motion to approve. Except for B-10.
Second? I have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Okay, B-10. So first up is Mark Kovich.
Good morning, Board Chair. My name is Mark Kovich. I serve as the Board President of the Western Hills Water District. I'm reaching out to respectfully request my strong opposition to the pending tax sale proposed by the county tax collector, which will have a devastating impact on our community and district. I respectfully urge you, as elective representatives, to exercise your authority under California law to pause or prevent this action. The property tax liabilities in question should have been reassigned to the unsecured role and attributed to the previous developer entities, which were World International and Angels Crossing, who were responsible for these obligations. The residents of Diablo Grande did not create this situation. It was inherited through circumstances that were, in part, erroneously incurred and enabled by prior county actions. The Western Hills Water District and the residents we serve are doing everything possible to resolve the challenges we have inherited. Despite our best efforts, the pending tax sale would not only punish innocent property owners, but also undermine the long-term financial interests of the county itself, as would eliminate any realistic prospects for future development and expansion of the tax base. Our district continues to make progress. We are actively litigating cases involving civil breach of contract, fraud, and misappropriation of public funds. We are nearing resolution on our wholesale water contract and a settlement discussions with the City of Patterson regarding sewer services. If the tax sale proceeds, the new parcel owners would not assume responsibility for the existing $31 million Melrose debt, which will fall squarely upon the Western Hills Water District and its ratepayers, further jeopardizing our financial stability and the well-being of the community. I respectfully ask that you act in the best interest of your constituents and the broader public by intervening to stop this pending sale. We need the county's partnership and understanding, not punitive, action, as we work to recover from circumstances that we did not create. So with that said, I'd like to thank you for your time, consideration, and commitment to serving the people of Stanislaus County, and I'm willing to answer any questions, if you have any.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next up is Michael Oliver.
Good morning to all. My name is Michael Oliver, and I have been a resident of Diablo Grande for 14 years. I am currently a Director on the Western Hills Water District Board. I'd like to remind the Board that the residents of Diablo Grande did not create this mess. We had two deadbeat developers who are currently in civil litigation with that have put this community in financial peril. Let me emphasize, we're not here today asking the county to fix Diablo Grande. We are here today to ask the Board to give us, the Western Hills Water District Board and residents, the opportunity to fix Diablo Grande ourselves. We're asking for your help. We're asking for the Board to look at the big picture. So what is the big picture? We believe the big picture is if, given the time, we will have a developer finish Phase One of the Diablo Grande project, which would mean approximately 1,600 new county taxpayers over the next 10 to 15 years. We are currently negotiating with three developers to finish Phase One by building 1,600 homes, as well as bringing back amenities such as golf, a top-notch restaurant, an event center for county residents, and a destination resort hotel. These amenities will enhance home sales, as well as bring in more tax revenue for the county, and provide opportunities for all residents in the county to enjoy these amenities. The Western Hills Water District is currently engaged with the Kern County Water Agency and the City of Patterson in positive discussions to resolve the outstanding water and sewer debts and make water affordable again for existing and future residents of Diablo Grande. We are confident we will have a solution. The key for success is we need more time. Ideally, 12 months. If the county goes forward with a tax sale, no developer is going to be interested in finishing this project. In closing, we appreciate the support from Supervisor Chance Condit and Terry Withrow. Chance set up several Zoom calls with other area water districts and county officials to strategize on finding a workable solution. Near the end of the first Zoom call, Supervisor Terry Withrow spoke up and said, and I paraphrase, "A couple generations before our current Board, the county supervisors approved the Diablo Grande project." So we need to help the residents of Diablo Grande find a solution. So that's why we're here today, to ask the Board of Supervisors to help the Diablo Grande community find a solution. Give us the time, and we're confident we can fix, and everyone benefits. Please vote to postpone the tax sale for at least one year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Ken Buener. Did I say that right?
Yes, close enough.
All right. Thank you.
Good morning, gentlemen. My name is Ken Buener, resident of Diablo Grande. Been there for about 13 years, and we've had our ups and downs regarding the water. I'm also on the HOA Board. But I want to, you know, agree with the two gentlemen that spoke before me with everything they've said, but you know, if the tax sale goes forward, theoretically, you could have 60 separate purchasers, or no purchasers. But either way, no developer's going to come in and help us. There's no economy scale, you know? To go forward, we need a developer who's willing to not only deal with our Melrose situation and our taxes, but we have to build a new water tank and enlarge our treatment center. And without a developer, that just can't happen. That's a multimillion-dollar project. And 60 new owners, how many would build a house in the next year, or 10, or 20? And without enlarging the water treatment center, we can only go so far in issuing will serve letters to serve new homeowners. So without postponing the sale and giving us an opportunity to seek a national developer, which we do have developers we're speaking with that are expressing sincere interest, but without the developers, we're doomed. And you're not going to have tax revenues from these lots, because even if you sell them to 60 different people, they're not going to have the water without enlarging the plant. I mean, yes, the waters, they can serve maybe 50 or 100 new homes, but that's about it. We need to enlarge the treatment center. So please, you know, consider this deeply and put some thought into it. And, you know, like Mr. Oliver said, give us an opportunity to help ourselves out of the situation that we inherited, not by choice. And we're kind of stuck with the situation. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Chair, if you don't mind, I am going to just ask that we pause public comment and provide an opportunity for the treasure tax collector to present some information. Normally, we would have had the treasure tax collector present first, but we did have some public comment. I think it's, and public comment usually follows staff information that's provided. So we're going to go ahead and invite Donna up, if that's okay. And she could provide a staff presentation, and then we will be taking public comment after the staff presentation as well, to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to reflect on any of the information that's shared. Thank you.
Thank you, CEO Hayes. Good morning, Chair Condit, Supervisors, County Councilmen, and again, CEO Hayes. My name is Donna Riley. I am the Stanislaus County Treasure Tax Collector. And my item today is to present to you the tax default auction listing and to set the date for the auction. This is a revised date. The original date that you approved last year was for May 19th to 21st, and I withdrew that from moving forward due to issues at the Diablo Grande area surrounding their water contract. And we moved that to a new date, February 23rd to 26th. So it's already been moved forward quite a bit. So let me just go through the process of how an auction happens. The tax default process in California operates under the direction of Revenue and Taxation Code and under the oversight of the California State Controller's Office. The State Controller's Office maintains a very detailed manual of what's called a Chapter Seven Sale, and you can find that on their website. When a property owner misses an installment, initially, that's what kicks off this whole process. My office sends them a letter reminding them to make their payment prior to June 30th, so that it is cleared in the current taxing year. If the payment is not made, the taxes become subject to penalties and interest. Delinquent taxes are eligible for payment plans, provided taxes remain current. If the payment plan is defaulted, it can be restarted, provided it is not in the fourth year since default. Once a defaulted property has reached the five-year mark, it is eligible for property tax default sale. A notice of impending power to sell is published in the newspaper, listing all properties at risk of auction. A list of properties is prepared, and a date is set for the auction. The Board has the opportunity to approve or deny that auction item. That's where we are today. Once approved, we begin our due diligence. We reach out to property owners and other parties of interest, which may even include family members. That's happened more than once, where a family member has stepped in to pay the property taxes. Quite often, it's a mortgage company, that sort of thing. Quite often, the delinquent taxes are redeemed at this point in the process, eliminating the need to auction the property. Taxes, penalties, and interest must be paid by the last business day prior to the auction at 5:00 p.m. The only other option is bankruptcy. We have papers delivered to our office no later than 5:00 p.m., the last business day prior to the auction, which will also prevent the auction from moving forward. Once the property is sold, the taxes are distributed, and any excess proceeds can be claimed in the following year. The May of '25 auction included 56 parcels, with 4.2 million owed to the county, schools, and special districts. At this point, the February 26 auction will include 173 parcels, with 5.2 million owed to county schools, county and special district. This is a really sad slide. These are all properties that are also on this auction. You can see, people live in these homes. I don't take it lightly. That one up in the upper left-hand corner, a church was on that site and burned, and they didn't have enough insurance to be able to replace the church. It really does not escape my notice, what we're doing here. This is important. These are some of the parcels that are also on the list. That was a golf course. It hasn't been a golf course in some time. On the assessor's map, that's marked as a hotel.
Okay. Would that push out, would be a year?
It could push it out to whenever the Board was amenable to it going forward. But we need, I think it's 270 days for the State Controller's Office. There's a whole, it's a very detailed manual, the steps that we go through, notifying people, publishing in lists, and of course, there are costs that we incur, you know? Again, the publishing of lists and so on.
Donna, I believe there is a drop-dead date as well. You have to have these properties sold by a certain date.
Yes, but in most of these situations, it's not relevant at this time. But we do have a limited, you can only sell it for four years after it becomes delinquent. I mean, so there is a terminus.
What does that mean? Can you explain that to me?
Once the properties become delinquent, the tax collector has an obligation to pay, to sell them and recover as much of the unpaid tax as possible. to sell them and recover as much of the unpaid tax as possible within four years.
And if it doesn't happen, then what happens?
You lose that tax.
Then the tax no longer is owed?
Right.
It becomes forgiven?
Yes.
Essentially.
So when is that date specifically?
I would have to...
Each property has an individual date.
Based on when they became tax-defunct.
So that's kind of important.
Yeah, that date's pretty significant.
To know when that is, right? I mean, we're going to make a decision here, and we need to know if we're up against that date on these properties.
We are not up against that date on these properties.
Like years out possibly?
No, not years. But we could do it in, later in twenty-six, if that was the will of the board. However, we've already kicked it down the road once. We've already taken it from February, or May of twenty-five to February of twenty-six. And that was done specifically so that there could be further negotiations with a developer, which we've been talking about with the Water District since 2023, and to allow Kern County Water District to deal with their contract issues.
So we don't have a drop-dead date, but it's approximately sometime in twenty-six?
Probably, yeah.
Probably.
Any other questions? Thank you, Donna.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next up on the public comment is Jeremy Moore.
Morning, Chairman. Morning, Board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Jeremy Moore. I am a pastor in the city of Patterson and resident of Diablo Grande. My family and I moved from Wisconsin to Patterson in 2017, where we rented within the city limits for the first three years, waiting for the opportunity to move into the absolutely beautiful Diablo Grande community. In February of 2020, that dream became a reality for us. We bought our home, put nearly seventy thousand dollars in renovations, and then COVID hit, something our community could not control. Seven months later, the golf course closed, something, again, our community could not control. Five months after that, my daughter was struck while riding her scooter by an impaired driver in our community, something our community could not control, obviously. And I'm happy to say that she's doing fine and well after surgery and rehab. She turned eighteen yesterday. Needless to say, those first nine months were hell for my community, for my family. Despite all that, we still believed and supported the Diablo Grande community in which we have firmly planted our stakes. This is our home. This is our community. This is our city. The church in which I pastor, New Life Christian Center Patterson Campus, is one of the fastest-growing churches on the west side of the county, growing to over four-hundred people in just four years, many of which live in Diablo Grande. In fact, more than ten percent of our church come from the DG community. These are families I've laughed with, prayed with, and even cried with. I've done weddings for some, funerals for others. We deeply love this community. The reason why I wanted to give you some of the backstory of why I'm personally here today is because of the ripple effect that this proposed tax sale on these parcels could have for the future of our community. We need these parcels. We need this tax sale to not, or to be postponed, to not go through if we ever want a serious developer to entertain building up in our community again. As you know, we are currently in litigation, and we need time to allow the legal system to work in our favor, to work for us. I'm urging the Board of Supervisors to pause and to trust the process. I truly believe that the Diablo Grande community can be stronger than ever. Just a few years ago, people would drive for hours to play at our golf courses, maybe some of you have played there, stayed in our hotels, ate at our restaurants, spent days enjoying the beautiful golden hills and green fairways of Diablo Grande. And the residents believe and are hoping that we can get there once again. But this decision for this tax sale will not get us. If we go through with it, if we move forward with this tax sale, it will not bring us back to a thriving, healthy community. In fact, it could potentially have the opposite effect. Having no developer diminishes our future. It means higher water rates, closed golf courses, devalued homes, people moving, which also affects families in our community and our churches, which I firmly believe are the backbone of our communities. I implore the Board of Supervisors to reconsider this decision and to trust the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. Next up is Doug Moore.
Thank you for the time to present my opinion on what's going on up there. My name is Doug Moore. I'm a resident of Diablo Grande. I've lived there since 2011. I take my hats off to Mark Kovich, that's been running the Water District along with all the representatives from the community that also serve on that board, that have been doing a spectacular job trying to bring us out of this situation. The tax situation that hasn't been paid since 2017 is not the fault of the homeowners. The homeowners have been paying their taxes. The former developer, World International, reneged on their responsibility of paying those taxes as well as Melrose. That has compounded itself over the years, and instead of holding them accountable, we're now being held accountable as residents in Diablo Grande. My background is one of, in nineteen, let's see, nineteen-eighties, I started up a real estate business in Los Altos, had a medium-sized firm there. I'm well aware of residential real estate properties. I worked in the business for twenty years. One of the situations that Diablo Grande faces, it's been, the market up there has been suppressed since the bankruptcy of the original developer back in 2007, 2008. The property values are half of what they should be up there, which means the county is missing out on two-and-a-half million dollars in taxes a year, just on the existing residents that are there. If this tax sale goes through, you've crucified any growth that could take place up in Diablo Grande. There's a potential twenty-two-hundred buildings that could be built total, and that produces, if the market comes back, if we can bring it back, that produces a hell of a lot more revenue for the county than anything that a tax sale could obtain. The, one thing I don't think has been mentioned, we have, as a community, been paying about seven-hundred dollars a month for water. That's the sacrifice the community's made up there to keep the water flowing and keep the community alive. I really, instead of waiving, instead of pushing the taxes down the road, I'd like to see you waive those taxes that were owed by other developers, not by the community, and give us a chance at survival for the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Tim Connolly.
Hello, Board of Supervisors. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you today. My name is Tim Connolly. My family and I moved to Diablo Grande back in 2017. A major part of my business career has been doing projections of high-tech products. I worked for quite a few multinationals like IBM, AT&amp;T, and Itachi. And I had the opportunity, starting in April of this year, to work on projections for the Western Hills Water District, going out five years. I did two particular scenarios that involved eight-hundred and sixteen-hundred new homes being constructed within five years at Diablo Grande. And that can be supported by the earlier plans, the master plans, that went up to over twenty-two-hundred homes. We have only six-hundred homes right now. Now, you are aware that our Water District is the custodian for the Community Facilities District, that owns ninety-one of these parcels. The other parcels that are up for sale, you know, could be separated out, don't have to be, you know, on the same, you know, whole big list. But that's a kind of a separate issue. I think that we should look at the fact that the need for a major developer is critical to be able to get the, you know, to build out the eight-hundred, up to sixteen-hundred new homes. If the tax sale goes through, we wouldn't know who would be buying these parcels, you know, random buyers, and that would prevent finding a viable major developer. If we look at the upside for the county, there's a potential for those two amounts, eight-hundred and sixteen-hundred homes, for additional tax revenue of two million per year to four million per year. So I urge the Board of Supervisors to waive these property taxes or at least delay the tax collection a year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Phil Davis.
So I thank the board for this opportunity to speak. My name is Philip Davis. I'm a resident of Diablo Grande. And at one-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty-two feet above sea level, Diablo Grande sits in the beautiful western mountains of Stanislaus County. The area of DG is unique in its unparalleled beauty and serenity. This is true not only within this county, but we believe within the entire Central Valley. There is no place like it. If not for the fraudulent predatory actions of the previous two owners, developers of Diablo Grande would presently be a thriving, vibrant golf course community and an economic driver for western Stanislaus County development. We are where we are due to no fault of the residents who have been left holding the bag for those who have exploited our community. We have been told time and again that these are our problems to solve, that there is nothing that anyone can do to help us. We have not hung our heads, or rolled over, or quit. We've taken action, helping ourselves by voting for a huge water rate increase that has most residents paying seven-hundred dollars per month for water. We have supported our president and the board members of the Western Hills District, Water District, who have and are pursuing every legal recourse and remedy available to us. We are willing to do this because we have seen the success of their efforts so far and the increasing likelihood that they and we will ultimately prevail. We are extremely fortunate to have this intelligent, enlightened, and determined leadership in Diablo Grande at this very critical time. And that's what we should expect from you, the County Board of Supervisors, intelligent, enlightened, and determined leadership that would do whatever can be done to aid the residents of Diablo Grande. For you to vote to auction the lots in Diablo Grande is the opposite of that. It represents short-sighted bureaucracy and lacks any imagination for the potential that Diablo Grande holds, not only for our community, but for, in fact, all of Stanislaus County. One study concludes that sixteen-hundred new homes in Diablo Grande would generate an additional four million dollars in annual tax revenue. It would also provide a linchpin of economic and recreational development for the western part of the county. The first rule of the Hippocratic Oath is do no harm. So if you can't help us, please do not harm us. The sale of these properties would do irreparable harm and effectively end all hope for the recovery of our community. So please stand up for all your residents and vote against the sale.
All right, next up is Jane Dryman.
Good morning, Chairman and Supervisors.
Morning.
I don't know how you follow that. That was great. I'm, I've been a resident of the Diablo Grande community for the last seven years. My late husband and I bought up there after my son and his family, about ten years before that. And not to repeat everything everybody said already, but Mark Kovich and this group have worked so hard to bring us out of the mess that we're in. And the community has suffered so many blows just since I've been there. The golf course closing, all the amenities leaving, the damage caused by wild pigs to people's yards, thousands of dollars of damage, wildfires, evacuations, causing insurance to skyrocket and cancel for many of the residents, a lot of residents having to leave because they can't afford seven-hundred, and in my case, almost eight-hundred in water bill. It's, this threat, this new threat is what it feels like. I know it's been going for a while, but I would just urge you to please give us an opportunity to make this community what it should have been a long time ago, and hopefully it will prevail. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up is Regina Scotland.
Hello. Thank you. I want to emphasize, thank you for giving us the option to speak and to give you our opinion. I'm not going to repeat what a lot of the residents have already told you, and I'm sure what you've read in the news or heard on the TV news about what's going on in Diablo Grande. I am in real estate, have been. I worked at AT&amp;T for over thirty-five years. What I want to emphasize is, I noticed she left the slide up here with the five-point-two million dollars staring you in the face. Everything she was stating on her process on delinquent tax sales was accurate, except in our case, we were not the ones who received the delinquent notices. That started when World International stopped paying the bill. Also, she made an indication that she's been working with the Water Board. And I'd like you to know that Mark Kovich and the current board started in 2022. And I believe that they've only talked with Donna one, maybe two times. What I would ask of you is that you pull out the properties of Diablo Grande from the sale, because if you are able to do that, because some of the other properties that they have on this tax sale, it's legitimate that you would put it up for auction. In our case, we, when you hear that we haven't paid these for five years, in actuality, that's true. However, it hasn't been five years or more that we, as our Water Board, have not done anything. What Mark and our current board has done since 2022 is actually amazing. Where Kern County would not talk with us about our water, they are now in full negotiation on that. I know that you're hearing a lot of things about, that have happened to Diablo Grande that may make you want to think, why would we not want to put these parcels up for sale? But we are at a period of time now where we are actually moving forward. And the seven-hundred-dollar bill that you keep hearing about the water, if we get a developer in and start developing homes, that water bill goes down for all of us. That's why we are here. And the amount of people that we have here is just a small portion that supports our community. Many people couldn't be here because they are either working, family, or other commitments that they had to be to. But I have talked to many people in our community, and we are a tight... But I have talked to many people in our community, and we are a tight-knit community where we're willing to pass a water rate increase so that we can give our community a chance. And I would really employ you to either put a hold on the tax sale or at least pull out our parcels, like the other people said, because if we have parts of the golf course sold off or parts of the, where the hotel is supposed to be, we're in talks now with developers that once we get our water situation taken care of, they are serious that they want to come in and develop this property. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Daniel Rollins, Rollins?
Rodas.
Rodas, there you go.
Thank you, Supervisors, Board. My name is Daniel Rodas. I am a resident of Diablo Grande, have been since 2018. I moved there with my wife. And I don't want to repeat everything that people said, but please postpone the tax sale of all of our properties. Right now, we are so close, we've been talking about this since even before I moved here. And we want to move forward and be a success story for the Central Valley. I've seen a lot of growth. It's, I'm really happy to see all the growth in Patterson. We want to be part of the growth, and we don't want to get left behind. We don't want to be holding the bag. We've paid our taxes on time, we've done everything right, and the people that came before us ditched out and just, you know, they don't care about us. But please, I implore you, help us. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. That was my last comment card on this particular agenda item. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak? Milt?
Yes, Chair and Board members, this is, there is a major upside for delaying this action and even completely canceling the tax liability of these lots. I just spoke to you at the beginning of this meeting, this project is an ideal place for building homes. You're not destroying one square foot of land that could be used, that's sustainable farm, prime farmland like we have in the MID and TID irrigation districts. This is where you, as board members, can make a stand on keeping the best farmland in the world from being destroyed by construction. We could put 100,000 people up there. I'm sure they don't want 100,000 people, but it's a beautiful place, like they said. This will attract a lot of people. It'll keep them out of our valley, out of TID and MID, and have places for people to live. This is ideal. This is what you want to support as our supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you, Milt.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Sherry. I live in Diablo Grande. All I'm asking you, please, think about the people in my age and even older that live there, paying $700 a month for water, $8,000 a year for tax, and all of the other expenses that they have. And I make $2,000 a month social security. It's always my husband makes 1,800 social security. I'm 78 and he's 81. Think about you, yourself, your parents. How would they want to live? Most of the people lived there have mortgage. Where would they go? It, that's all I need you to please think about. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others that would like to make a public comment on this agenda item? Seeing that, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the board for more discussion, comment, or motion.
I just have a couple of comments. I mean, obviously, I represent Diablo Grande, it's a community within my district, a resilient community. I know that firsthand meeting with a lot of you, this has been an uphill battle for myself as well as you for a number of years now. You know, I would not, you know, Mr. Moore, you know, I love and respect you, but I would not be for waiving the taxes entirely. I don't think that's reasonable. But what is reasonable is pausing this. We do need more time. I have been in the rooms where negotiations have taken place. I have met with several developers, with Mr. Kovich as well as Mr. Oliver. They have come out and seen the community. But again, we need more time. We, we have been extensively negotiating with Kern, and to the leadership of the board, you guys have done a phenomenal job. I do believe that any action that could be taken by this board could impede those types of negotiations and essentially put a death nail into this community. And again, Ms. Tax Collector, you know, respectfully, there are other parcels that are being considered. This is an entire community. It's not a one-off. This isn't just a black and white issue. This is a very gray, complex issue where we've had these folks being hung out to dry by past fraudulent developers. So again, it's, it is a special circumstance. And again, I'm not advocating that we waive the taxes whatsoever. I'm just asking that we take a step back. We do have that discretion as this board. There's $5.2 million that are delinquent, but we have the discretion, we have the authority to put this aside, let these negotiations take place, let the course run its course so that they can make hopefully some progress with Kern. Hopefully, we can continue those negotiations with those developers, and hopefully, we can actually see this community flourish and take off. You know, I've always compared Diablo Grande to the West Side Del Rio. That's what it could be, and I believe one day it absolutely will be that. But we need some time, and I know that any action taken by the board today, it will, it will bring that one dream into a nightmare. So I just respectfully ask for some empathy from my colleagues here today, ask for some patience. And again, I know that this has already been delayed once. I do thank the tax collector for that and her leniency. And obviously, Mr. Withrow, thank you so much for your ongoing support and collaboration and trying to help these folks. But this is a gray area. It's not a one parcel. We want to make sure that these taxes are eventually collected, and they will be collected. But we need some time and just, I ask for a pause and a delay if possible.
Thank you very much. One question, I'm not sure if I should direct this at Donna or the district, but how was it that the district came to controlling 91 properties? Anyone? Come on up. And do they have any homes on those parcels?
Yeah. The Western Hills Water District serves two legal functions. We're a public utility that serves water sewer and storm drain, where we have our ratepayers pay for that service, and we're also the custodian trustee of what we call the Community Facilities District. When the Melrose bond was raised, legally, the water district was put in charge of being basically the fiscal agent, collecting these Melrose taxes and paying the bondholders. World International decided back in the fall of 2017 to no longer pay these taxes. They controlled the water district for many years under what we call land ownership voting rights. Because of that control and the things that they've done, they did never looked out after the community. Consequently, we are suing World International and the individual board members who are on that board. Guillermo Moreo, who was the board president of the district, was not only running the water district as board president and elected by World, but he was also the attorney in fact for World. Carmen Kearney was the chief financial officer of World. Her husband Douglas Kearney was also an employee of World International. I can confidently say this because it's part of our complaint that we filed against World International and these individuals for fraud. This was something that they were setting us up for, and they purposely handed off these properties to another organization called Angels Crossing, who were newly established in December of 2019. I don't want to get into the background of the individuals that were involved with this so much. They used the water district and their control of the water district to sign off on an assignment, assumption, and release agreement that gave the power over to Angels Crossing, with Angels Crossing having legal responsibility to make good on the debts, including taxes, subsidies to the water district, on and on and on. I have to give the board here a lot of credit, because I was around back then when you had appointed Julie Davis a fifth controlling board seat to the water district. That was the pivotal moment when we took control of our own destiny. I cannot thank you enough for that. Unfortunately, Julie's no longer with us anymore. I've ended up stepping into her position when she was the board president of the water district. The people of Diablo Grande protested, and we've now changed the water district voting from land ownership voting, so we don't have a controller, a developer who controls the district. The people of Diablo Grande and the registered voters of Diablo Grande now vote for the board of directors, making it truly democratic. I was elected legally in November 2022 and appointed as board president. So here we are. The reason, and to answer your question specifically, is how we came into control of these properties, because since we are the custodian trustee of this community, community facilities district, we had a legal obligation to foreclose on the properties because the Melrose taxes were not being paid. When that foreclosure occurred, and by the way, I want to let the board know as well, when World International ran the board, Guillermo Moreo, president of the board, hired his friend who worked out of his law office to do a foreclosure, and the district paid this gentleman $169,000 and never did a foreclosure for us. It was only until we, as the community, took over the district, hired our own legal counsel, and it took me over two and a half years to get this foreclosure completed at a cost of $750,000 in legal costs.
I'm going to interrupt you, you got to cut to the chase. How did you acquire the 91 parcels?
We foreclosed on it because we had a legal obligation to take the properties over in what we call a credit bid.
Okay. And it was, it wasn't Angels Crossing that did it, it was the new board, yourself?
It was our board that foreclosed on the properties. We had a legal obligation under the Melrose Bond Act to do that.
Okay. And have you been paying the property taxes on those parcels?
Consequently, the property taxes, because we're a public utility, have been moved from a taxable to a non-taxable status, and this is what the argument is about, is the fact that these taxes were owed by World International, Angels Crossing. We've never been charged for any property taxes ever since we've taken ownership of it. This is why we argue the point that these taxes should have been moved to the unsecured tax rule. And there's a differentiation to be made here. You know, you have up here $5.2 million that does not represent Diablo Grande. This is a, this is a misunderstanding by our tax collector to convince you, board members, that part of this is, you know, part of it is our issues, but there's, there are other, there are other ad morallities in this whole thing, such as Melrose taxes that have been stripped off this tax sale as well. From our perspective, the ad valorem property taxes that need to be owed by Diablo Grande is only 1.3 million. So you can very well go do your other tax sale if you want to, but we're asking you to leave us alone on this for now, until we can get our problems resolved.
So out of the 5.2 million, Donna, you've paid the special districts, right, their proportional share in the school districts through the TEATER account? It's been paid?
I'm not sure that special would have been paid through TEATER. We would presume schools, but that's something we would have to research further. So I think you're, you're probably getting at, of the 5.2 million, how much is actually owed to the county versus someone else? I don't think we have that information in today's meeting.
Yeah. And Donna is Riley, our treasurer tax collector. I have great faith she's trying to do her job as a constitutional officer, like the sheriff does his job, like elections and everything else. So I guess, again, I've been tracking this just enough to be dangerous, but not, I don't have enough information right now. I'm okay for a short pause. I wouldn't entertain anything, myself personally, I wouldn't entertain anything longer, but I need a in-depth briefing on this because I hear different things, and I'm more than willing to have a meeting with you, Mark, or some of your folks, but I also need to have a meeting with staff. I'm sorry, because Donna made herself available, by the way, and I was in Harvest last week. And so I do apologize to you because I should have been more well-prepared on this. But again, like 30 days so I can get, I mean, that seems like enough time for me to get my druthers about me. As far as doing away, Milt, I can't support doing away with not paying or the tax not being owed, because I'm guessing that we already paid some of these out, and it then starts bordering on a gift to public funds and other things that the attorney will opine on at some point. And services were provided, sheriff's department and other services were provided for some of these parcels. Of the 91 parcels, how many have houses on them? Do you know?
We, first of all, two, there are two homes that are unoccupied out of the 91 parcels. I don't think they're habitable right now. Those two homes were lived in by the original developer and his contractor by the name of Don Panos and Stan Duck. Our individual homes, I pay my Melrose taxes, so, you know, obviously, I'm paying my property taxes. I'm not going to, the tax collector's not going to put my property up for sale. Those are the only two homes on the 91 parcels. There are 63 parcels, custom lots, that the district now controls that are stubbed for utilities that we could build homes on right away, so that's, that can be in jeopardy. The, the major thing that we're really worried about is that if we don't have a master developer, I cannot provide water to any new development up to a point because we need to expand our water treatment facility and water storage, which the master developers who we've talked with have been willing and told us that they would fund that as part of their build-out. But if we have the property sold off, 91 parcels sold off to 63 different individuals, I can't collectively get those new owners to fund the district to do this expansion that we need so that we can have more customers and bring down our water rates. That's the objective, the total objective, as far as bringing down the water rates.
The, the two houses that are on this list, you have any objection to them going for sale?
Yes, because the one major home on the top of the hill sits on 330 acres of property that is part of the old Legends Golf Course. The other parcel that Stan Duck lived in is a smaller parcel, but it's totally uninhabitable. From my perspective, it needs to be demolished. That's my personal opinion. And the property's not worth that much anyways if it was to go to tax sale, and I still couldn't build a home on there because there's no utilities that can be hooked up to it. So it just doesn't make sense. We just need to keep the entire project intact. Let us, you know, deal with it the best we can. I know that the board, I'm feeling the board is feeling very frustrated that we haven't moved forward with our issues with Kern and Patterson. We're really close. We're really close in getting this resolved so I can start lowering the water rates, making it more affordable for the, our customers to live there and, you know, prevail in this whole thing. This has been a long fight. I mean, we've been dealing with this since 2020, over five years now, and I've been personally involved with this. I, I retired early to work full-time for the district, and I'm also working as the general manager, keeping the district running. You know, last year, we had a major water break on Diablo Grande Parkway. It cost us over half a million dollars to repair. I had to put the community on nine-day water restriction. You know, there's a lot of things that are going on, obviously, that you folks are unaware of. I just cannot stress enough how much work and effort we're putting in to save this community.
Thank you, Mark. Donna?
I just wanted to follow up to see if there were any questions that you had.
If I could, I understand that, just to clarify, there was a comment about the sale going to potentially a large number of individuals purchasing property. Can you clarify the intent in terms of how you intend to offer up this property?
Absolutely. We moved, as you know, to online auctions in, I want to say it was 2019, and we've been operating that way ever since. In fact, we've had some corporations come up for auction, and the company that we use bid for assets has the ability to not only bundle parcels together so that this wouldn't go piecemeal. It does need a coordinated effort up there, and we recognize that. So we'd like to see it be bundled together and the parcels sold off either in groups of 30 or possibly all of the parcels at one time. But we've, we've had these issues with others where, like a corporation that owed money... But we've had these issues with others where, like a corporation that owed money for a long period of time, bid for assets actually marketed them to a company in Brazil that was in the same industry, and they were getting a lot of information back from their stockholders that they were being approached about this company, and the company paid the taxes. So we've seen good results from this previously, and I think that bid for assets is extremely professional in what they do and will be able to find a buyer for the parcels.
Any other questions for Donna?
No, no questions for Donna. But you have comments? Okay. So, yeah, this is just no fun, and it hasn't been any fun for anybody for years up there. I get it.
We've been meeting since 2023. I've had many, many meetings with Western Hills Water District, and in fact, attended the June meeting up there.
Yeah, and so the first thing I wanted to say was just to thank Donna for all the work that you've done, and thank you for the first extension that you did. I totally appreciate it. I know you're trying to do your job, and this is not a fun one to have to deal with here. So, of course, we can't forgive the taxes. There's not going to be a forgiveness of taxes. We know that's not going to happen here. But I'm all in favor at this point. We continue to accrue interest and penalties on these tax bills. I get that. And so the day will come where we will get our tax dollars here. And so that's why it's so important that we find, make sure of this date, of the drop-dead date, so we don't get past that point of no return, where we don't get those. So what I'd like to see here happen for now is, first of all, we need to identify that date to make sure we don't end up in a spot where we lose that. And then I'd like to separate out from this agenda item just these properties here up in Weston Hills Water District, and give them more time to potentially make something happen here. This won't cost us anything to do that, right? Because we will continue to charge interest and penalties on that.
I would advise against that. In my opinion, it would be better to move the whole list rather than separate out.
Why would we not want to continue to pursue the other properties in the county that have nothing to do with this type of situation that we're dealing with here? Is there a reason to not do that?
Let me formulate my response here.
I'm just saying, so without, if we didn't have this issue before us, this would have been a consent item that we would have just not even blinked, and so why can't we just...
I think, no.
Procedurally.
Coming from County Council, first remember that we are here in open session, and getting advice from County Council in an open session is fraud, right? You don't really want to do that.
So, sorry, what's that mean? Tell me again, it's fraud to ask our County Council for advice during a meeting?
In open session, yes. I'd much prefer to give you counsel in private first, from that standpoint. And I hope you understand where I'm coming from on that. I think in this case, separating it out comes with many hurdles, a lot of complexity from a legal standpoint, and my advice at this point is to either approve all of them, deny all of them, or just continue all of them. I would not advise on separating them out and approving the remainder. That would be my advice right now.
Pardon me, Supervisor Whitro. In order for us to remove the items individually, and I am not an attorney, so I can be maybe perhaps a little more straightforward, we have to find that the parcels individually are of value to the county, the whole county, and that it creates a county issue for us to sell them. And then we have to write the reasons why that individual parcel should be set aside, and then County Council has to accept that. So procedurally, it would be a challenge. It would be better to move the whole list forward or the whole list, and I'm not the attorney in the room.
Yeah. And so I think the argument can be made that there is value there. I think to the extent we can make this thing work, there is a lot of more revenue that will be generated for the county if that development up there happens. And for us to do anything that could potentially be to the detriment of that, which is what I see this as.
And bundling them up and selling them would...
But that's just an unknown at this point, right? That's just an unknown.
It's an unknown either way.
Yeah. So, okay, so then, I'm not going to sit here and fight with the attorney over this, but then I would recommend at this point that we just postpone this whole thing and come back in, I don't know how many days, and have some options here. And if we have to, Tom, talk to you about this separately, not in open session, then let's do that. But I just see no benefit for us, and I see no harm, I guess, no benefit in us enforcing the sale right now, and I see no harm. Only potentially good can come out of this if we can postpone this a little longer again, not advocating that the taxes don't get paid. This tax is going to get paid, and if we get up against this date, we'll have the auction. And that's just a reality for everybody here today, that this could come to that if we don't by this date and get to a point where we have this resolved, these properties will be auctioned. But anything we can do right now to try to help that process, I think, is what we should be doing, anyway, in my opinion, is what we should be doing. Again, Donna, I totally appreciate what you're doing and your job, and I know we've spoken about this, and I appreciate that you postponed this.
Yes, we have spoken about this.
Yeah, appreciate that you've postponed this before, but I just think there's no harm in us giving the, again, as long as the interest penalties continue to accrue, and we will recover those upon, with an auction, I would make the motion, if we can do that, that we somehow, whatever that date is, defer this until we've had more time to discuss how to maybe separate these out. Like I said, I wish we could do this right now, but it sounds like we can't. Just go ahead, go with the auction of the other properties, but...
There's a meeting on December 9th. There's a meeting on December 9th, which would be 30 days for them to bring information back. Is that enough time?
So I've got a first.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Any further discussion?
Want to clarify?
Clarify, what was the motion?
To go ahead and postpone us till December 9th, till we can find out from Tom how we can separate out these other parcels besides the lots that we're dealing with in West Hills Water District.
There's a motion in a second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you. We'll be back.
You're welcome. Hi. What's that?
Public hearing to introduce and waive the first reading of an ordinance to add, amend, eliminate existing fees for the Department of Parks and Recreation, Tara Chumley and Haley Klebemeyer.
Good afternoon, Chairman Condit, Supervisors, CEO Hayes, Councilmen Bowes. I'm Tara Chumley. I'm the Director of Parks and Recreation for the County, and at the staff table today is Haley Klebemeyer. She oversees our events and marketing activities for our department. Today, we're here to hold the public hearing for changes to the park and recreation fees. Stansos County Parks and Recreation currently operates four regional parks that charges fees for services. The revenue generated from these fees support ongoing operations and maintenance of the facilities. In addition, the off-highway vehicle parks receive financial support from state grants for operations, maintenance, and capital improvements. Please note that effective October 15th, 2026, Stansos County will no longer operate recreation at Woodward Reservoir due to the South San Joaquin Irrigation District's early termination of our license agreement. However, we look forward to continuing to provide fun, affordable recreation at Woodward Reservoir through the 2026 season. We are recommending some slight increases to our reservoir fees that includes a dollar increase to online reservations, $5 increases to reservation cancellations, charges for dog and horses, and holiday fees, and a $10 increase per carload for the county's annual fireworks show. These adjustments are in line with comparable rates at neighboring campgrounds. The day use in camp fees currently in place are comparable with our neighbors, and no charges being recommended. No change is being recommended. So since 2014, the department has implemented an invasive mussel species prevention plan to address the quagga and zebra mussel. In 2017, the department began to contract with mussel dogs to perform vessel inspections during the peak summer visitation season. In December of last year, the golden mussel invasive species was detected in Northern California waterways, and as a result, the department enhanced vessel inspections at Modesto Reservoir to include daily mussel inspection dogs and added security services at the entrance stations for both Modesto and Woodward Reservoirs to ensure that vessels did not enter the park outside of normal business hours. The department was recently awarded a state invasive mussel response grant that will support ongoing vessel inspection, banding, and quarantine activities. Boat ramps are currently open at both Modesto and Woodward Reservoirs with inspection, banding, and quarantine requirements. The grant provides funding for one-time equipment and materials purchases along with contracted inspection services, but does not fund ongoing staffing costs to implement. When implemented, the vessel inspection fee will continue to support the county's invasive species prevention program activities outside of the grant funding. The department has received an increase in requests to film at various park locations, such as our pedestrian bridges and our off-highway vehicle parks, and it's recommended to add a filming fee of $100 an hour. The fee will cover staff time to coordinate and prepare the site location. For comparison, the city of Modesto does charge $168 for every two hours. Also recommended is a $10 increase in the concession vendor fee as a step to bring the fee in alignment with other agencies. Stansos County Parks and Recreation also manages community and neighborhood parks, cemeteries, bridges, fishing accesses, extensive open spaces and river bottoms, providing outdoor spaces for the community to enjoy. The Courthouse Lawn Downtown is a county park and is currently a separate exclusive use fee item in the fee schedule. We are recommending that the Courthouse Lawn fee be removed from the schedule and to include it in our regular exclusive use fee that is used for all of our parks. Additionally, we're recommending that the Board authorize the Director to waive exclusive use fees for nonprofits hosting free community events. A few examples would include the Kiwanis Club use of the Courthouse Lawn for the Fourth of July Parade, and the Police Activities League at Parks RX host community events at Oregon Park. Requests for events that charge an entrance fee would not be waived. Our park facilities offer unique and scenic locations, ideal for hosting a range of special events. Over the years, the department has hosted music festivals, athletic competitions, boat shows, dog competition trials, and fishing tournaments. Events such as Dirty Bird Campout, symbiosis gathering, and the San Jose Spartan Race demonstrate the capacity and appeal of our park locations. The department's recommending to establish a standardized fee structure for special events. This will allow event promoters to understand the fees that will be charged in advance of submitting their request. This starts with adding a new event application fee of $65 for special event requests. Requests will include an event description, dates, location, expected attendance, along with event promoter information, and staff will review the information and follow up with the promoter for additional information prior to securing their dates with a deposit. Currently, a $10,000 deposit is required only for events exceeding 5,000 attendees. To better align deposit requirements with event scale and to support mid-size events, the department recommends a tiered deposit system as shown on the screen. Deposits are needed to secure dates for the event. There have been instances where we've had a date confirmed, and it's been canceled by a promoter, and then it's too late to schedule another event. Additionally, campsites are often blocked out to accommodate these events. Deposits are refundable, less the administrative fee, if they're canceled six months in advance of the scheduled event and are non-refundable thereafter. If they're canceled, this allows the department to reopen the camp reservations to the public. Various other event fees being recommended include acoustic sound engineering services that would be charged at actual cost of the county's professional services contract, an administrative fee that will charge actual time at weighted labor rate for the event coordinator with a minimum of two hours, an event daily fee in the amount of $7 per person, and then other additional services that have been requested by prior event promoters include equipment rental fees, park maintenance labor, and fees for the park vaulted toilet services, and this would cover the actual costs that the county has charged per pump out. Memorializing these fees in the park fee schedule will assist staff in promoting our parks for special events and allow better transparency to interested promoters. Staff recommends that you conduct a public hearing to introduce and waive the first reading of an ordinance to add, amend, and eliminate existing fees for the Department of Parks and Recreation, and if approved, these fee changes are effective December 19th, 2025, in time for our 2026 park season. For updates and information, please follow us on social media and visit our website at stancountyparks.com. Thank you, and staff are available to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Tara? All right. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. I haven't seen any written comments on the dais, and we're not going to recognize any of those, but we're going to open a public comment. Does anyone in the audience wish to provide public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back towards the Board. Or a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a first.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tara.
Thanks, Tara. Okay, moving on to discussion items. Approval of the sheriff to enter into a retroactive agreement with the California Department of State Hospitals for the continuation of the jail-based competency treatment program in the amount of $12,356,511 for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2028. Sheriff Dircksey and Captain Frank Martinez.
Good afternoon.
And Brooke.
Sunday, Brooks here as well. Today, we're presenting, like we said, the jail-based competency treatment program, providing an update on our program and requesting permission to enter into a new agreement with the Department of State Hospitals. A little bit of history, prior to the establishment of jail-based competency treatment programs, also referred to as JBCT, the practice of the Department of State Hospitals was for individuals found in competition trial to be sent to one of the state hospitals for restoration services prior to continuing their criminal proceedings. When that took place, an individual was placed on a statewide waitlist to get to the Department of State Hospitals. Oftentimes, due to the large list, individuals were waiting anywhere from four to five months to get transferred to DSH for treatment, and once there, they were looking at a 90-day turnaround for restoration prior to returning to the county to resume their criminal proceedings. Due to this large overflow and need, the Department of State Hospitals were under a lot of pressure to get people treated quicker and off that transitation waitlist a lot sooner than they were. As a result, to try and get creative in how they treated this population... As a result, to try and get creative in how they treated this population and met the demands, they started partnering with local county jails to create what we refer to as J B C T treatment programs. What these programs allow you to do is instead of individuals being transferred to Department of State Hospitals for services, they stay here at the local level, and they're restored here under the guidance of D S H, using our own treatment teams and receiving the same level of care that they would receive at Department of State Hospitals just at the local level. Funding for these programs is fully funded by the Department of State Hospitals, so there's no cost to the county to operate these programs. As a result, we were one of the first counties D S H approached to get a jail-based competency treatment program up and running. At the time, we had a very high IST population, and so they definitely felt the need was in Stan Sals County. We opened our program in two thousand eighteen. We started off with twelve beds initially. At the conclusion of our first contract, due to the success that our program was seeing, we made the decision to increase to eighteen beds, and that's where we're currently at. Eighteen beds in our J B C T program. As you can see, it's a very outside-the-box type approach to treatment. This is not like any other jail facility or unit or jail facilities you'll see. Like I mentioned, we provide the same level of care that the Department of State Hospitals provides. If they were to have been transferred there, we had to take it a step further. We provide things that they don't receive at Department of State Hospitals. We have things such as therapy dogs that come in every Wednesday to work with the population. Our staff lead yoga. They take them outside, and they participate in volleyball and other activities just to try to engage them. So it's very much a hands-on approach. The treatment consists of one-on-one type services, there's group services. Like I said, there's everything from yoga to bingo. A lot of therapeutic approaches that we take. I think what makes our program so successful is the team that we have dedicated to this program. We have nine medical clinicians dedicated to this population and two custodial deputies who are in this unit every day, working with this population, building those relationships. And it's because of their hard work and dedication, I think we've seen the results that we have. This is a quick snapshot of some statistics from when we opened in two thousand eighteen. We've treated, or we've had a total of five hundred and sixty-six individuals come through our program since two thousand eighteen. Of those, we restored three hundred and ninety-four to competency, and of those who were restored in our program, the average was about sixty days to restoration. And when you compare that to when we sent them to the Department of State Hospitals, like I said, you're looking at ninety days or more, so we've cut almost a month off the rate at which we're restoring them. When you compare our program to the J B C Ts throughout the state, we are right there aligned with everybody else, but in a lot of cases, we actually exceed the data in comparison, so we're considered one of the better programs in California, and a lot of times where the program other agencies come to tour and learn from as they look to develop their own or modify their program. Real quick, I wanted to go over the IST growth cap. There was a lot of questions as it relates to the growth cap and the impact that J B C Ts have on that. What is an IST growth cap? Like I mentioned earlier, the Department of State Hospitals is under a lot of pressure to get people treated and restored at the state level once they've been found incompetent in trials. J B C T was one avenue they took to try and get the number of individuals coming to them down. Another measure they took is they've now placed a growth cap on each county in California. So what that means essentially is once they identify a number that you cannot go over, and once you go over that that number for IST referrals to the state, they impose fines on the county that are required to be paid. You can recoup those fines if they're dedicated to going towards diversion programs or other programs to help reduce the number of ISTs in your county. How this impacts Stan Sals County? We have a cap of eighty-nine for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. The county did pay approximately four million dollar fine because we exceeded the growth cap. The good news is, in talking to Reuben Imperial, who oversees and tracks that, we are projected to be under the growth cap for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, so we are seeing growth. The work we're putting in is working. How does J B C T impact the growth cap? Unfortunately, even though we're treating these individuals here on-site, they don't ever make it to Department of State Hospitals, they still count them towards IST referrals, and so even though they're not being treated at D S H, they still go against our cap of eighty-nine.
Captain, can I ask you?
Yeah.
If they're diverted before, they can't get in your program, right? Yours is when they've actually been found incompetent to stand trial?
Yes.
Okay. Is there discussions about trying to divert them into a program like yours before they're found?
Actually, this next slide.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're good, sir. So another avenue D S H has taken is they created an early access and stabilization service. So what D S H has done, they've partnered with Recovery Solutions, who luckily for us, is the same vendor who provides our J B C T services, and what the early access team does is why once an individual has been found incompetent in trial, they will, when they're on a waitlist, waiting to get to either a J B C T program or Department of State Hospitals, this team comes into our facilities, and they work with these individuals while they're on the waitlist, one-on-one, providing them the same services that they receive in a J B C T or a D S H. The goal is to get those services started sooner, so by the time they do enter into, ideally, you want to get them restored while they're on the waitlist before they actually enter into a program. Worst case, you get them jump-started on medication programming. That way, when they step into J B C T or D S H, the turnaround's a lot quicker. Since two thousand twenty-two, we've seen four hundred and forty-nine individuals come through or who have been treated by the early access team on our facilities. Of those, thirty-one have been restored. Several others have been transferred into a J B C T where they were then found competent or transferred to the state hospital where they were restored to competency. So the nice thing about early access is if they are deemed restorable or regain competence, that doesn't go towards our growth cap hit.
So our actual agreement is a three-year term with an option to extend for two additional one-year time periods. It's a continuation of our current program with the eighteen beds and our two deputy sheriff custodials, as well as our jail medical costs. And the only change is the state has changed the reimbursement from per-bed rate to actuals model. So we asked for more staffing. We didn't add new positions, but we got additional funding to fund some of our current positions, which is a point-seven-five F T E of a sergeant custodial and also an account clerk three at point-five F T E. And these are the program costs. It's about four million dollars a year. Some lines have escalators and some don't. There's also a management fee that is included, and it's twenty percent of the medications and twenty percent of the jail medical actual cost. So I would say we break even or we make a couple dollars off of this. So for today, we have the following staff recommendations. Approve the retroactive agreement with the California Department of State Hospitals for the continuation of the J B C T program in the amount of twelve million, three hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars for the term of July first, twenty twenty five, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty eight. Authorize a sheriff to sign the retroactive agreement and any necessary amendments or other forms as required. Adopt a resolution as required by the state in order to contract with the California Department of State Hospitals, and lastly, direct the auditor controller to increase estimated revenue by six hundred and seventy thousand, thirty-three dollars in the sheriff's detention budget as detailed in the attached budget journal. And with that, we are available for any questions you may have.
Any questions for Captain Martinez?
Yeah, does the state, when you build this budget, the twelve-million-dollar budget, we're gonna we're gonna do X, Y, and Z, right? And you said some of them have escalators. We submit our budget on what it would cost every year, and the state okay's it or denies it? Okay. Where it comes from. Thank you.
Any other questions? No? All right. Open it up to public comments. Anyone have public comment on this agenda item?
I'm Kevin McFarley, District Three. I just have a quick question, and that is I noticed that a certain percentage of these people are being referred to a state hospital. And I'm wondering, does that mean that they failed in this system? That they were not they were not successful with your program, and they had to be referred to a state hospital? And then I'm also wondering, what happens to them eventually? Okay, what happens to them after they're finished at the state hospital? Do they go back to your program? Or do they go back to incarceration or whatever? So I'm just kind of curious about what happens at that point. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Great questions. So yes, so some are people get diverted to D S H under two circumstances. Every person who's found IST, we get what's called Patient Management Unit, since it's a packet of individuals we're screening to see if we're gonna accept them into our program, if they'd be a good fit. In Stan Sals County, we accept everybody. We don't really care about your behavior. We were able to specialize your treatment to that person. The only ones we would reject are individuals who have traumatic brain injuries. It's just individuals that we know that they're just not gonna pass our program. D S H prefers not to place them in J B C T. They'd rather us send them to D S H directly to get that more intensive-type care. And then our program is intended to be a rapid-response-type program, so at the request of D S H, because we are under their guidance after sixty days in our program, if we don't see that they're making any progress or they're not going to complete the program in the near future, they will be diverted to D S H for more intensified-type treatment. So those ones that were transferred to Department of State Hospitals are the two different criterias for why they were sent there. As far as what happens once they've successfully completed our program, once they've completed our program, they're moved out of the unit to make room for somebody else coming in. But we do have a team that puts together a discharge plan for them. We're working with B H R S, we're working with the Public Defender's Office, we're working with all the key stakeholders to make sure there's a plan in place with these individuals that get ready to not only re-enter the criminal justice system and proceed with their court proceedings, but also make sure that they have a plan post-release to prevent them from coming back and, you know, being coming back into the program or just incarceration in general, so hopefully that answers your questions.
Thank you, Kevin. Any other public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for either comments or a motion.
Good program. Motion to approve. All staff recommendations.
I have a first, and I'll go ahead and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, moving on. Second discussion item, approval to adopt plans and specifications. Award and construction agreement to George Reed Incorporated. Approve of professional service agreement with Mark Thomas and Company Incorporated for construction management services for the Urban Pocket Area Ten Bret Hart Project. reallocate building community infrastructure funds from Empire Storm Drain Storm Drain Trunk Line to Urban Pocket Area Ten Bret Hart, and approve the use of road maintenance and rehabilitation program funds for the Urban Pocket Area Ten Bret Hart Public Works. Public Works Director David Lehman.
It is aye. And a couple thoughts cross my mind. I want to say fourscore, and seven years ago, this board meeting started. Good afternoon, Sheriff Condit, and board members, and County Council Boz, and CO Hayes. Thank you for having me. We're talking about Bret Hart Neighborhood, and it's part of one of the ARPA projects, and here's what the funding distribution looked like on August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. The board approved how we were going to split up the money, and on March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, the board approved updated strategies that saw an additional five-point-eight million, as shown on the table. Here's a project list overview from September twentieth, twenty twenty-two, and it's Topeka Santa Fe for five-point-six million, Kenwood Star for four-point-seven, Riverdale Track at ten-point-six, Colorado Rouse at ten million, Herndon at two-point-two, Bret Hart at ten million, and Park Lawn at six-point-nine. Scope of work included storm drainage facilities, curb gutters, sidewalk, domestic water facilities as needed, sanitary sewer facilities as needed, and streetlight facilities as needed. And here's how we, the board approved the five-point-eight million of additional ARPA, and some projects were added. Valley Home, Silvyn Coffee, and Hickman were added in districts one and two. And the staff worked with the respective district supervisors to identify those projects. And so here's Bret Hart. It was one of one of the projects chosen. The entire community is about fourteen-hundred lots. We're doing a portion of it right now, as funding was available. It's only a portion of larger Bret Hart community in the northern part, generally west of Crow's Landing, east of Las Vegas, north of Glen, and extends as far as the D I E lateral one canal. So the city of Modesto and Stan Sals County executed an M O U for reimbursement of costs related to strengthening and replacing existing water mains and laterals in South Modesto, Park Lawn, and Bret Hart neighborhoods. We're gonna be reimbursed for all the water costs by the city of Modesto. And in Urban Pocket Ten Bret Hart, as I said, it's sidewalk, storm drain facilities, water mains and laterals, and widening and restructuring the roadway. We did the sewer project many years ago. I think it was the late nineties. The intent of the ARPA-funded improvements is approve public health and safety. And so we bid the project out on July twenty-third. We opened bids on September fourth, and the apparent little bidder is George Reed at fourteen-point-nine-seven-seven million dollars. And here's the fiscal impacts. So the construction contract is fourteen-point-nine-seven-seven. Ten percent of that is your construction contingency. Construction management is one-point-three million, and then for county staff to manage the C M, it's another sixty thousand dollars. Total cost is seventeen million, eight-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand, sixty-seven dollars. And here's how we're proposing to fund it. There's original eight-point-two-four-four million left out of the ARPA funding. B C I F is paying for the ARPA project at one-point-three-four-two million, and R M R A, we were proposing to use that as our contingency. So that would be the last dollars we spend out there, one million, one-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand dollars. And the city of Modesto's water project is about seven-point-one million. And that gives us a seventeen million, eight-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand, sixty-seven dollars. And staff is recommending the reallocation of one-point-one-three-two million dollars of R M R A funds from the Tenaya Drive Payment Rehabilitation Project to the Bret Hart Project to fully fund it. All ARPA and B C I F funding will be exhausted prior to utilizing the R M R A funds. Any unused R M R A funds will be reprogrammed for the Tenaya Drive Payment Rehabilitation Project. They'll be completed in future fiscal years. Parts of Tenaya are already severely damaged, and once a road has P C I zero, it doesn't go any lower than that. So I guess that's the good news, is parts of it already pretty much failed. They've been for a while, and you can probably wait a little bit longer. Staff recommend, recommends, approve the plans and specs for the Urban Pocket Ten Bret Hart Project. Award a construction agreement to George Reed, Inc., for the Urban Pocket Area Ten Bret Hart. Authorize the Director of Public Works to execute a construction agreement with George Reed in the amount of fourteen million, nine-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand, eight-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars. Authorize the Director of Public Works to execute change orders and not to exceed ten percent. Approve a professional service agreement with Mark Thomas and Company for the construction management services. Authorize the General Services Agency Director or Purchasing Agent to execute a professional services agreement with Mark Thomas for construction management for this pocket in a not-to-exceed amount of one-point-three million dollars. Amend the memorandum of understanding between the city of Modesto and Stan Sals County for reimbursement costs for the South Modesto area water strength and replace water mains project. Approve the reallocation of one-point-three-four-two million of building B C I F funds from the Empire Storm Drain Trunk Line project to the Urban Pocket Area Ten Bret Hart. Approve the use of up to one-point-one-three million of R M R A funds for the Urban Pocket Area Ten Bret Hart Project, and direct auditor controller to increase estimated revenue appropriations by seventeen-point-eight million dollars in the Public Works Urban Pocket Infrastructure Project Budget Unit that is shown on that line. And staff is available for questions.
All right. Bring it back to the board for questions. Chance?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Great presentation, Mr. Lehman, and thank you so much for all your hard work on this. Just point of clarification, more just for, I guess, the public's concern. This does not in any way change the boundaries that were presented and advertised to the public, correct?
This is this project, as recommended, is the project we've been telling the neighborhood about the whole time.
Wonderful. Thank you for clarifying.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Mr. Lehman, the the one-point-one million dollars of the R M R A program, that is just specifically for Tenaya Drive?
It's, right now, that's what we're proposing. It's It's, uh, Tenaya is on our list. It's going to get done in the next year or so. And we thought that one might be appropriate. It's between districts four and five. And, you know, it's an industrial collector. It's been in bad shape for a while and it can wait a little bit longer. It's like 9th Street, we keep on moving 9th Street out for, because other priority projects happen. And it's not in great shape. Ride's rough, but it's serviceable.
So that, that particular program, road maintenance rehabilitation program, that 1.1 million, so I'm specifically looking at my condition, my pavement condition index in District One. And I know you and I have had this discussion before. Using that particular fund, is that going to have a direct effect on road maintenance in my district? Because I can't have my, my pavement condition index go any lower. I'm the lowest of all the districts. So that it's specifically a little touchy for me.
Right, I, I understand. I think what, what Public Works staff is proposing is that if we delay projects, there's several of these, these projects that include Colorado Rouse, it'll include likely Riverdale Track, we're going to need some supplemental RMRA on it. I think what we would say, suggest, recommend to the board is that if we're going to delay projects, we push out things in three, four, and five because they're getting extra money today with the ARPA projects from RMRA. And we continue to do things as scheduled in districts one and two. I, I think that's what staff is recommending.
Okay. Let me, let me think on that for a little bit. Any other questions?
Let's go to the public first.
All right. Going to open up public comment. Any public comment on this agenda item? Saying none, I'm going to bring it right back to the board.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So we had a briefing on this and unfortunately mine was on the phone again because I was out doing what I do in October. And when, the thing I love about the CEO's office and the department heads, when they get together, they find a problem, they come with potential solutions. And the solution in this meeting was that we're going to use RMRA, which is road maintenance money, to fix a shortfall in funding and/or hold back on the districts that we're going to get extra money, what I just heard Dave Lehman say. And so I was, I think on the, the call, I was completely opposed to it. We've got terrible roads everywhere and even taking money from other districts doesn't make sense because I drive on those roads. I drive on Tenaya. I'm a semi truck driver. I've been driving and you can tell the worst roads in the, in the county when you drive a semi over and with 80,000 pounds. So I, I think I was very clear that this is a bad idea. When I look at three funding sources really that are flexible, Major L, HUDA Highway Users' Tax, which is the potential declining revenue source because it's gas tax, and RMRA, those are the real fungible fix our roads. I, I know I've heard many of the board members and Chance, one of the reasons he voted against the budget was because there's not enough road workers. And I share that sentiment. Our roadways are in disrepair and we have 1,500 miles of roadway. And Dave, you will say it over and over, it is our largest asset that St. Louis County owns and we're allowing it to go into disrepair. And so taking this money is not, is not logical for me. I think we've got about 40 million dollars to take care of 1,500 miles of roadway, culverts, bridge repairs, not new bridges. But you think of the signs, the stoplights, everything, it's not a lot of money to do that. So we had, when Major L came about, we had improved a few points, again, in the road sufficiency rating. But we don't expect that. And we didn't promise the voters, but we told the voters that we would touch every road in St. Louis County three times over the 25 years. We're not trailing very well on that every eight years, but again, maybe we'll catch up. Major L's been flat funded. So putting off roadway projects for what I see as infrastructure, a different type of infrastructure, doesn't again, make logical sense. Major L, one of the components of Major L was community connections. We utilized some of that in Empire to do some sidewalks as a match. I, that's another suggestion is we should chase that. I think there's about a million and three a year that's accumulating. This fits perfectly in because Modesto has put money in, this would compete well for it. I think that would be something really smart to, to go and chase that money before utilizing this money or even thinking about it. Again, using RMRA, I can't, I can't support it. It's just not based on the roadway. And this is 25 miles of chip seal and you did 112 miles this year and we could have done another 25 miles with this money. And, and that would have gotten us closer to our goal of touching every road in every eight years. So just some of my thoughts and I'm, just because it is the single greatest complaint I receive on, on a regular basis, bar none, bar none, I, I can't support using it.
Any other comments?
Well, the, the money's going to have to come from somewhere. So either we're going to have to give up the additional funds that we all each equally received or not, but this promise was made to my district. We've publicized this for several years now. We can't reneg. So that's been, you know, that's probably the grievance with South Modesto mainly is that they've been given these promises over generations, over years and decades, and then they just never come to fruition. So I certainly don't want this to become a, a repeat situation. So if we, the funds don't come from this pool of funds, certainly needs to be considered elsewhere.
So I'm going to respond to that because if you put that, go back a few, a few slides to right. There.
Right here.
Yes, right there. So we did a good job. Actually, if you go back a couple more and actually head my district, we did a good job, which I thought was very fair right there. The 34% of the money went to District Five, 24%, 21%, nine and 11 to Buck in my district. And I was very much in support of this because the need, we broke down the 750 million dollars of need and we proportionally shared the money. And I've got four more county islands in Turlock. Didn't try and do any of them. Instead, I went for one island that we could afford. And, and we have to scope things, just like building this building with single pane windows. We have to scope and either you either scope it down or you phase it in. And I don't want, I don't want your folks to think they're not getting something because they got the vast majority of the money. And so there's going to be more work done in your district than mine, but I'm okay with that because there's more need. But I, I don't want them to feel like they're, they're not getting completed because they, we have to borrow road money because road money is being borrowed from our roads, our, which is our largest asset. So again, the community connections, I, I would chase that first. I don't know what, you know, again, it took me between our meeting and now to think about that because we've utilized that money before. And this is a county project, this would be a county city because this is an area that we're trying to annex, I believe, right? And there should be enough money in the connecting communities because if we're accumulating at 1.3 million, I think the only pull on that money has been the Empire project. So there's got to be two or $3 million in that account. And I don't know what the timeframe is, but I think you could request that money and go through the COG process in fairly short order.
So what, what does this do to the process, Dave, as far as breaking ground and as far as the current map?
I, I think that because of the interest in time and, and this is a fairly large project that if, if we could award the project today and then look for additional funds for contingency, I think that would be, be amongst the things that we could do. Go ahead and say RMRA for today, but ask Public Works not to spend any of it because there is some contingency that's not RMRA on this project. And come back and report back and see if we can't find some other money somewhere else.
So give you the flexibility essentially where you have a safety net, but you have the flexibility to find other funding.
I think that's what I'm hearing is, and I agree, I don't want to spend the RMRA money necessarily. We've got plenty of road work to do for sure. So I think that there is some money down at the COG and I can go meet with Jose Luis and let's see what we can find.
Okay. As long as we uphold to our promise that we made, because we did vote on these maps, we had an opportunity to change the boundaries at the time. The boundaries are the boundaries and we have to kind of uphold to that. So I do appreciate your efforts and hopefully there's some flexibility in finding some additional funding that could free up our, our road money.
Any other comments?
I'm just curious, Dave, did I understand this correctly? So the RMRA money that, that's going to be used for this, then does that come out of RMRA money for just that district then? Or does that affect the whole county? You know what I'm saying?
Right. When, when Public Works, when we do our budget, like on chip seal, we'll concentrate in an area because of efficiencies. So we'll, we'll kind of focus on an area and do that. So we don't spread our highway funds every year perfectly amongst the districts. We operate under the general assumption of what Vito said with trying to hit every county road in eight years. And so we're on track to, I think, hit it in 10. And so I think with that guiding principle, kind of guiding star, we don't really budget per district, but Tenaya is one of those that is coming up and we thought that might be a good one to postpone. 9th Street, we've been wanting to do 9th Street, we've had plans for, for about four years and for one reason or another, it just is a big project, it's expensive, and it's been pushed down the road. So, and in here, the construction management or the contingencies is 1.5 and we're only proposing to put in 1.13. So we have about 300,000 of non-RMRA contingency. So we do have a little flexibility to get this project under construction, deal with some change orders along the way. It's not greenfield construction. There's lots, it's an old neighborhood, there's going to be lots of things out there that we haven't found. So I would imagine we're going to need our contingency on this project, but I think we have enough flexibility going forward that if we came back and said, hey, we'll check in with you, we can see if we can round up some other money, another color of money for this, I think that would, that would be ideal. We do need to award this project and get it under construction.
Can we award it without the RMRA? Or in, in?
Right. And we, we need to identify the contingency upfront. And so we can swap out later, I think, Tom, right? We could change color of money, but we need the 10% upfront. And, and I think what we would say, Buck, is that we would, before we tapped into the RMRA, we'd come back and check in with the board. So we, we put brakes on ourselves. It's all right. It's fine.
While continuing to look for additional money so that we can transfer that money out.
Right.
And just to be clear, that would require an amended motion for this to, to move forward.
So what do you guys think if we make the motion with the amendment to it stating that before any RMRA money gets hit, that it comes back here for approval?
And that staff continues to look for additional monies to move that RMRA out?
Yeah.
RMRA?
That would be an appropriate motion.
Okay. Motion, and this, sorry.
Was that, no, was that? Was that motion clear enough?
Yeah, that was a motion.
You want to go one more time?
Is the motion clear, Kelly?
Yes, I got it.
Go ahead and repeat the motion if you can.
So the motion was that we would amend the staff recommendation to hold off on the RMRA until it comes back to the board for a, for a second look and, and make the effort to try to.
Find other monies.
Find other sources for that.
What's the timeline on that, Dave?
Um, I would say probably we're, we're going to be right back here for Colorado Rouse in about three weeks, I think. And so we're going to have that conversation again with Colorado Rouse. And so, and then after that, we Riverdale Track and that'll probably be January. So I'll get ahold of Jose Luis this week and see what he thinks and I'll be able to better inform the board by the time we get to Colorado Rouse award.
So we had a, we had a motion and then it was seconded and then we had a restated motion, but it hasn't been seconded.
Can I also just make sure I have clarity upon what Dave was just saying though? I think the motion is, is telling staff that prior to the Public Works Department incurring RMRA expenses, that they come back to the board. Correct? Okay. So I just want to make sure it's clear that that might not happen till next year sometime.
Right.
Because you're going to use these other funding sources first.
Yes.
And that's going to be your very last funding source.
Right, correct. But we're going to be talking about this again in a few weeks.
We will be talking about it again in a few weeks, but just to be clear, those funds are intended to be spent last, which means that you really do have quite some time to go search other funding sources prior to coming back to the board.
And what does that do to the construction timeline? Will, will you be able to?
Full speed ahead.
Good, okay.
Okay, I have the amended motion and it needs to be re-seconded. And we have a second. Good?
Don't forget to come back to the board, Dave. Because I'll forget about this.
No, we'll, we're going to be talking about it again soon. I think we need to find about 4.5. I think between the three projects, we need to find 4.5 million.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
All right. We're going to acknowledge a receipt of correspondence and refers recommended on the agenda, Board of Supervisor reports. Any reports? Looking down here or looking over here? Any, any reports?
I just wanted to let everyone know there's going to be a community meeting regarding air quality and meet and greet. We're going to talk about enforcement and local solutions Wednesday, November 12th at, and it's the Community Collaborative along with VIP. And there will be someone from the Air District, Roses Gutia-Brayden and myself, who are board members. And it is at 529 California Avenue in Modesto. Need the information, call my office.
All right. Well, so I'll kind of give you a little story. I had a constituent call and complain to my office about a illegal marijuana grow in my district, east, in East Oakdale. And they had actually reported this illegal grow to Crime Stoppers anonymously and left the message and got a phone call back from a deputy who told, told the constituent that they no longer look into illegal marijuana grows. And the team had been disbanded, which obviously caused me concern. So I went out and met with the constituent and actually went up to the gate that leads into this particular area that he had concerned with. The gate was locked, keep out, blah. I had sense enough not to climb it and go check it out myself, but I did leave a, a business card on the gate. I, I do know that the Sheriff's Office did receive a grant, I think it was for $3 million. And also there is still funding that was given by the county for illegal marijuana grow enforcement. So I, I'd like to get a report from staff about monies that are still in that budget and whether or not we do have a marijuana enforcement team or not. Because what I'm hearing, that we don't.
So I'm just going to pitch in that I had the same conversation with the constituent also. Exact same terms were reported to me.
So staff are happy to request the Sheriff's Department to report out on this issue. We had flagged this as a potential topic for the upcoming December board workshop. That was already kind of in process. So if that would be adequate, we'll stick with that plan. But if you'd like something sooner than that, you could let us know.
Okay. Appreciate it. All right. Where am I at? Closed up my agenda. Legislative report, there we go.
Okay. So clearly one of the very top topics in the news over this last week has continued to be the federal government shutdown and the, particularly the funding of SNAP benefits that we have covered in prior meetings here. I'm going to ask Christine to go ahead, Huber, from our community services agencies, our Director of Community Services, to share out what is the latest information that she is aware of. I know that there were some news headlines that were occurring while we were in this meeting this morning, but I think from everything I can tell, it, it still appears that what we knew yesterday is that. knew yesterday remains true and that there will be some partial funding of SNAP in the current month. I'd also invite Christine to share with the board the strategy and planning that they've been putting together with community partners to try to support the community here. Thank you.
Good afternoon. So as you're aware, there were two federal lawsuits that were filed requesting that USDA and the federal government pay for the entirety of November's SNAP benefits here in California known as CalFresh. And they were both supported with direction to USDA to come back with a plan of how to issue benefits, either the full amount or a partial amount. Yesterday, USDA submitted a plan that would use 4.3 million or billion of their contingency funds. That would fund about 50% of the nation's benefits for the month of November. USDA did issue letters to states this morning with what's called issuance tables that basically describe what amount of money is to be issued to the customers who qualify. And the difficulty is, an issuance table process is going to require reprogramming or updated programming, I should say, of statewide systems to issue the benefits. And so the problem with that is the amount of time it will take to program the system because there is no current programming in our computer system to do this. Luckily, California has a newer system. USDA estimated that it would take anywhere from several weeks to several months to issue these benefits based on how old state's systems are. In California, we have a newer system. So we are, I know we want timelines, but I don't really have a solid timeline. It's thought it could take up to three weeks to update the computer systems, for the new issuance tables to be integrated, and then for those benefits to be uploaded into the third-party system that actually issues the benefits. It could be quicker than that, but what I'm hearing is potentially up to three weeks. Also, when benefits are issued, they're issued over a 10-day period. They're not issued like on one day. And so people then, depending on where they are in the issuance calendar, could take up to 10 days then for their benefits to be issued. We still are awaiting more information on this. I haven't gotten anything more specific than that. We continue to work with the community to ensure people have access to food. I think that's what's great about being in Stan's loss community is there's quite a bit of support for people most in need. And also, we want to provide a place for nonprofits and other organizations that hand out food and for those food banks that have food to ensure that no matter who you are or where you go for help, that there will be access to food. One of the things we have, we're part of a group that partnered with the Stan's Loss Community Foundation, with United Way, who runs 211, with First Five Stan's Loss, the Family Resource Centers, for a place that people can go and donate funds. That funding is, gift cards are being purchased that can only be spent on food, and those are available at Family Resource Centers to anyone who's in need. They can go to a resource center. They just have to show, and the resource centers can help with this, that they are CalFresh beneficiaries. And then in addition, there's, the food banks are working to get food out to food pantries. I understand the lines can be very long. You know, people are waiting to get food. And so we are very thankful for them, you know, that they are staying open and getting food out to our community members. We, it seems like from a public information perspective that most people know about the CalFresh impacts. We did not get many calls yesterday wanting to know what was going on. So I think getting the word out that the benefits have been delayed has worked for most people. And so that, we consider that a good thing so people know what's going on and then also where to go to get any, you know, food. So.
Can I do just real quick, and this is for a later date, but I would love for us to just get more information with regard to, you know, we're spending 17 million a month, and so we talked about 92,000 individuals, I think that maybe we served. I'd love to just find out more data on who these individuals are and their families and then to try to get deeper into the kind of route, how do we help these individuals and families get to where they're not? I mean, 92,000, 20% of our population practically is, you know, dependent on these programs for food. And it'd just be great to figure out more data on who they actually are and what we can do to help these individuals and families to try to get them so they're no longer. Anyway, I just would like some data. You know, I was just shocked at the dollar amount. First, you know, I know that we have all these programs and all these things going on, but just when you actually start to quantify it like that and the number of individuals and families that are affected and that are on this, I would love for us to dig into first exactly who are they, because we must have that data. Who are these individuals? And then what can we do to make a difference to get these individuals off? Anyway, that's a big ask, I'm sorry, but whatever.
No, we can definitely do that. I think that is one of the things we've been working on, and it's not so easy to tell, but we know there's a portion of CalFresh recipients that do work. But because their income is so low, or they're encouped with their housing composition, they still might be making under the poverty line. And so it's not that people aren't working, people aren't working and still qualifying for benefits.
Yeah.
You know, people that are receiving Social Security because of disabilities or being over the age of 65, right? So we are working to figure that information out and to be happy to come back and do that.
Yeah, just that mix, just that alone, that mix of who these individuals are. And then, I mean, there's some that there's nothing we can do, that they have to be, stay on. It'd be good to find out what that mix is and who are the ones that we could target that we know that maybe we can make a difference in their lives and help them. Like I said, people that are on disability and things like that, there's only so much we can do, but there's definitely, I'd just love to see that mix and then we can maybe target those individuals that we could maybe help.
Definitely will do that.
Any other questions for Christine? Thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes that report. Thank you.
All right. All right. We are at the spot of the agenda to adjourn. We are going to adjourn. We do have closed session.
Yes, we have closed session this afternoon. The first is conference with legal counsel, initiation of litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 56.9, subdivision C. The agenda lists 10 cases. We will be discussing eight cases. The second item is public employee appointment. Title, clerk of the Board of Supervisors pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 57, subdivision B, and Government Code Section 25, 100.5. That appropriate for public comment?
Any public comment on those agenda items? Closed session. Seeing none, we adjourn.